The pledge will be forthcoming by the lovely delegation over there in this direction. If you haven't checked in, especially officials of the Finance Committee who've been back here before, we were checking to make sure that you've checked in so you can be a registered voter here. And there are brochures out on the table if you haven't seen them. The School Committee superintendent has brought three new flyers. We weren't here until about five minutes ago, so make sure you get those. And now I will give it to you.
We call Ashville, and we started in 1913.
I'm Stacy Adams.
I'm Latoya.
I'm Natasha.
I'm Yana.
I'm Rachel.
I'm Jessie.
I'm Jill.
I'm Amy.
We begin this morning with the implication following by the pledge of the flag. This is a case of the flag.
I moved to Ashville in 2005. I was licensed as a nutshare of the gospel in 2008. But this is my first invitation here in front of your home. I've taken from my inspiration something from Isaiah 45. And that's something from Peter Martha, who was the chaplain at the U.S. Senate. So join me, I'm going to read first Isaiah. "I am the Lord, and there is no other. Besides me, there is no God. I equip you, though you do not know him, that people may know, from the rising of the sun and from the west, that there is none besides me. I am the Lord, and there is no other. I form light and create darkness; I make well-being and create calamity. I am the Lord who does all these things." Now if you'll join me. Almighty God, holy, just, merciful, and loving, hear our prayer as we recall the words of the Messiah, that we are to love the Lord our God with all our heart and soul and mind and strength, and that we are to love our neighbors as ourselves, for this fulfills all the law and the prophecy. Deliver us, we pray, in the tyranny of trifles. May we give our best thought and attention to what is important that we may accomplish something worthwhile. Teach us how to listen to the prompting of thy Spirit, and thus save us from floundering and indecision that waste time, subtracts from our peace, divides our efficiency, and multiplies our troubles. Help us to remember that we are neighbors, and that we are to love one another as we live together in community. Help us remember that so much of this town runs because of the volunteers across so many departments and activities. Let the enemy's schemes be defeated, and may his voice be silent. Where we ourselves are wrong, make us willing to change; and where we ourselves are right, make us easy to love. In Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Please join us in the pledge. I have allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We got this all worked out? Looks like a good angle.
I noticed that. How are you? Yeah, babe, it's really smooth, man. I want to sit here so my big fat head's up in the air.
Is that all right? Is this in your way? Is this all right?
This is all right. I need a quarter.
Oh, you are.
Hello. Good morning, I'm coming as being a reporter. Thank you all for coming. And from now on, we're going to try to have one conversation at a time. What I'm going to do right now is, before we talk about anything we're going to talk about, I'm going to ask for the meeting to be opened by a red flag. Sit down, clerk. Thank you.
To either of the councilors of the town boroughs in the county and Franklin meetings, in the name of the Commonwealth Council of Representatives, you are hereby directed to meet at the board and having set hands. Qualified to vote in elections in the town of Marys. To meet in the town hall in said Ashville on Saturday, at 1:00 AM, 2014, at 1:00 AM in the morning. Then in their to the act of the college or law department. And you are directed to serve this warrant by posting of a test of copies thereof at the Ashville Town Hall and the Ashville Post Office in said town. Set the names and places of the time of holding said meeting. Hereon fail knowledge, we intend to return this warrant to Duell and Duell on to the Town Court at the time of taking the meeting as ordered. Given this thing for our hands, it's put in second date of year in 2014, signed by the Ashville Select Board, Tom Carroll, Paulson Kirk, and Ron Fuller. Two copy of tests and a list of councilor. As soon as it's to the limits of warrant, I note that the margin of the town of Ashville of posting of the test of copies of the train at the Ashville Town Hall and the Ashville Post Office, and the names and places of the meeting as given directly. Signed by our Councilor Elizabeth Shore, April 23, 2014.
Thank you. What we usually do, what I asked that we do today is, before we formally talk about the warrant and begin moving on articles, if we open up the calls downstairs, which requires that we move on Article One first, and then we can talk about the other things that we had to talk about. Any objections to that? Hearing none. Everyone should have a copy of the warrant. And for this article and every other, hopefully you will waive my reading of the posted article, and will just hear the motion rather than hearing twice. Any objections to that?
No.
Okay, and finally, if someone would move Article One as written, then we could put that one forward, any such motion?
Mr. Moderator?
Yes, Mr. Carter.
Mr. Moderator, I move Article One as printed.
As printed, thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Mrs. Jordan, do you have the opportunity to examine the ballot box?
Yes, I have, Mr. Moderator. It is present in empty, and I'd say four voters, so I go downstairs.
Let's start filling. Thank you very much. Before we move on to Article Two, I'm required since May 24th of 1849 to read the Conduct of Town Meeting Bylaw. And I shall do so now. "All persons present at any town meeting shall, while the meeting is open, be seated where requested by the presiding officer. If there be sufficient seats therefore, if not, they shall stand at the west end of the hall. When anyone addresses the chair, he shall rise and stand uncovered during this speaking. No one shall stand in front of the chair or around the moderator's stand when votes are being counted or given to him, except when they are called upon to do so by the chair. There shall be no talking about the house while business is being done, and all shall keep silence at the request of the chair. No one shall speak on the same question more than twice without leaving the meeting or to explain or to call to order. No one shall interrupt another while speaking, except to call him to order. When several motions are made in regard to the same subject, relating to the sums of money, numbers, or time, the question shall first be put upon the largest sum or number and the longest time. In all other cases, no new motion shall be made while one is pending, except as an amendment, or to commit, or to adjourn. When a vote decided by the moderator is questioned, it shall be made certain by persons on either side rising and standing in their place, uncovered, so counted by the moderator, or tellers appointed by you. The reports of all committees related to money or property shall be written. All motions and amendments shall be in writing, when required by the chair or any person. No person shall be allowed to move the reconsideration of any vote, unless he has voted in the majority or not voted at all. No peddling or smoking shall be allowed in the hall during the meeting. This code of bylaw shall be read by the presiding officer at each annual town meeting." At this time, I'm going to change my calls. At this time, those who can, if we can stand and remember those who have passed. Lauren Martha Andrews II. Marguerite Louise Barry. Dennis Earl Clark. Susan Shaw Clark. John Bartow Hall. James A. Holly. Eleanor Lazarus. Elise D. Mimi-Piripin. Norman Bronson Pike. Richard Arthur Powers. Milton E. Rice. Amanda Marie Roy. Thomas M. Centoro. Carol M. Sheen. Richard J. Turcot. Walter A. Whitney, Jr. If you have a moment of silence, remember them. Thank you. If you would show me by your hand if you are not a registered voter of Ashville, please raise your hand. Thank you. And I appreciate your standing, your standing on these wings. At this time, we have a complicated warrant, a lighted warrant, with thirty-six articles, two petitions. And what, you know, I was thinking in preparation for this, three times I get involved, and I got the best job in the house. First of all, I got the best seat in the house, I get to look at all of you. But I also don't do one scintilla of work compared to what these folks at the front table do every year. And when I come to the meeting in preparation for this, I realize how much I have to learn in order to be prepared for the meeting, and I had this little tutorial. I realized that it'd be great if we could all have this tutorial before town meeting. What we've decided to do this year is a, what we've done in the past, a little overview of what we're in the budget, that we're going to be reflecting on in our morning by both the Select Board Chair and the Finance Committee Chair. So, let me ask first, I will introduce everybody, then I'll ask Mr. Carter and Mr. Murray to do that. This is our Town Clerk. And I'm this, I have admiration for Nancy Dunn. Or Anne Dunn, she still won't tell me what her name is. Our district Town District Assistant, Mary, it's given, who does so much work to make this possible. Very appreciative of all the work Mary's doing. Our Select Board Chair, Tom Carter. Again, welcome with admiration. Our Selecting, Ron Fuller. The Attorney Chair of Finance Committee. Mr. Schreiber, Mr. Schreiber, also in the Finance Committee. Janet Rogers in the Finance Committee. David Newell in the Finance Committee. And Ricky Carroll in the Finance Committee. Thank you, thank you for all you've done in preparation for today. Mr. Carter, I'm sorry, who's invited?
Good morning.
Good morning.
This year's budget, these don't just get thrown together. The bus alluded to this, there's quite a lot of work that goes into it. My records show that we, as the Select Board, we went over the budget, went through it in grueling detail. I'm sure some members would think maybe we went over it, had it in, I don't know, maybe a little too much, but we went over it at least twelve times at twelve different meetings. Seven of those were with the Finance Committee. We worked in concert with the Finance Committee to get the questions asked and to try to figure out a roadmap for where Ashville should go financially. This year's budget is four, roughly four and a quarter million dollars. As we go through the budget, it's one of the really driving portions of the budget, what really gave us quite a few challenges. It's our largest budget increase by percentage and by dollar volume, was vocational education, which we're budgeting an increase of $217,000. This has to do with the way that historically Ashville was agreed to finance and educate our vote and students. And another part, big part of that, when we get into that discussion, will be transportation costs. The budget does reflect for our employees a 2% cost of living increase. So that, I just want to bring you up to date on that, that's what we agreed on. Some of the other accounts that you'll see some changes on, Town Hall expense, when we get into general government. As far as maintenance, we've decided that maintenance in Town Hall is more than sweeping the floor and washing the windows and doing that sort of thing, but sometimes there needs to be some paint. And maybe some of the toilet paper dispensers need to be replaced when they fall off the wall and things like that. So there's an extra $4,000 in that. There's an extra $5,000 over last year in legal expenses. Public safety, the police department, it's about a $7,000 decrease from what we budgeted last year. What's curious in this is, we went through the discussion, it's about ten man-hours or person-hours less than what we've budgeted in the past, but it should give us about twenty-five more hours of the police being out in the community, which is a neat way to think about how this money's being administered. Also, under public safety, one of the big driving accounts there is $24,000 to set up an antenna to, actually in Blaine Field, so the emergency services have coverage in our southwest corner of town, Spuce Corner. When we get to general highway, or highway accounts, we did our best to increase winter roads a little bit as the cost of materials and so forth increased. And on winter roads, we made our best attempt to bring that to a three-year average. The budget, the box that we had to work in didn't quite allow for that, so we had to cut that. And of course, there'll be some discussion on the lake dam. As far as the maintenance of that, and a study to figure out what we can, what needs to be done and how expensive it will be. At the end of the day, we came out in a very good position compared to what certainly I thought six weeks ago, maybe two months ago. We still have $70,000 roughly left in free cash, and we didn't have to touch the first nickel of stabilization fund, so that stands today at $417,000. So, but there's been a lot of work by a lot of good people, including the people that the department had and the committees that brought their budgets to it to figure out what was needed, what was necessary, and worked through that with us. So very grateful for everybody's help.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Carter. Mr. Murray, you also pedagogue.
And Mr. Moderator, I think struggling for education is a bit of a reach, but let me try this. There is at the back of the hall, a one-page summary that is a spreadsheet that is oriented this way. And if you had that in front of you as I speak, I think that would help. The spreadsheet is titled up at the top, Long-Term Financial Planning, for the annual town meeting made for today. And I'm sorry that it represents almost an eye chart because it's in such fine print, but I'm not going to struggle in detail on this. I think, as Mr. Carter explained, there are a number of details that will emerge as we go article by article through the warrant. But what I want to do here is just point out to you that in the context of this four and a quarter million dollar budget, which is about what this town spends annually, on the order of $4 million, a little bit more than that, these numbers are of particular concern to the Finance Committee. We worked long and hard, the Select Board, as Mr. Carter noted, to come to unanimity on virtually every article as we thrashed through the various details of spending and expense sizes and so forth. But we also had this particular framework in mind as we did this. The top half of that spreadsheet is labeled projected capital needs. And this is the region of the spreadsheet where we go through and try to identify the Highway Department, the Police Department, Fire Department, the kinds of capital needs they project for the future. And what you can see is we laid across from fiscal year 15, this coming year, out to fiscal year 2023, the various estimates that we have in mind right now by these different departments of what would be needed to replenish or replace capital levels. For example, this year, you're going to hear about the need of the Highway Department to replace a 20-year-old dump truck. And you can see that amount for fiscal year 15 proposed is going to be on the order of $167,000. A big dollar amount, but in the context of a $4 million-plus budget in the town, it's not that significant. However, you can see that year by year, if you go out, you continue to require various kinds of capital replacement. And in general, this is a very rough estimate, you can see that on average, we're kind of having to spend about $150,000 a year for replacement trucks, bravers, sweepers, cruisers for the Police Department, engines for the Fire Department, and so forth. These go on a pace if we're going to be responsible taking care of our assets. So we watch that with some care, try to ensure that we've got the wherewithal to be able to afford those different acquisitions. The next section you'll see is called debt obligations. And this is the kind of indebtedness that we have incurred or anticipate incurring to provide for things such as our capital requirements for schools, things like the ambulance, which is a replacement kind of fund that we set up. There is now being proposed a building to house the ambulance in Ocean, which will be different from the Fire Department. And that's projected here. You'll see that we've got the highway truck for 2018. That is, we would expect, if it's approved at annual town meeting, the approval would be to borrow $167,000 to pay for that dump truck. And we would not start paying that debt down until fiscal year 16, next year, not this coming year. And then we would pay $50,000 in each of the following two years, if the debt exclusion is approved. And in that way, we keep track of the total down below, seeing how much debt we're incurring. And you'll notice that this debt is consistently well below any 10% figure for the general fund that we have. That's another hallmark that we look for, to keep that debt within limits so that we don't get overly extended in terms of our debt. Finally, the thing that we think of practice mostly, and Mr. Carter alluded to this, is that if you look down at our reserves, as of today, we have free cash in the bank of $246,000. Our stabilization account stands at $417,000, for a total of $663,000 in T there. That means that our reserves are about 15% of us of the total budget. And that's a very healthy position to be in. But our policy is to try to keep those reserves all combined into a 10-15%. Now, as you'll see in today's budget discussions, what they're proposing for fiscal year 2015 is that we will spend some of the free cash in order to get through this budget cycle, bringing the free cash balance down to about $66,000, or $67,000. We will not need to touch the stabilization fund, that will remain at $417,000. We propose setting up, as you'll hear later, a small $2,000 stabilization fund for post-employment benefits for our retirees, primarily health care. And then that total is $486,000 that we would have in reserves, or still 11.4%, we think significantly above the 10% lower limit we started with. So this kind of financial projection gives us in the Finance Committee confidence that together with the Select Board, we've developed a sound budget, we have preserved the kind of reserves that we need if any casualties arise. And so we believe that we can support fully this budget that we're here about. Thank you, Mr. Murray.
Thank you, Mr. Murray. Anybody having trouble hearing?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Everyone at the front table and anyone else, there is a microphone here that we're going to ask anyone who wishes to come up and they mistake it to you, take a minute to shuffle it, I'll try to walk it to you. it, I'll try to walk it to you with your clothes. But please, let's move the microphone closer to our mouths, because some people have trouble hearing. The other thing I wanted to point out here, because of the length of this warrant, and because we have to get our chief election officer out of here in time to do her work downstairs where we have the polls open, this would be a limitation at the end of today for this meeting. We don't want to have to suspend to another day. We'd like to get our business done. So I'm going to, everyone has a right to be heard and to hear every other person who speaks, and I dedicated to that, that's what I'm here to do, to ensure. At the same time, I'm going to be really focused on what relevant material is being offered, and if it's not relevant material, I'm going to crack away. As the bylaws says, everyone gets the opportunity to speak twice to any particular matter unless by leaving the meeting, and I'll hold us to that. I'll make sure everyone has a chance to speak once before I give anyone a chance to speak twice. And now that I've taken up so much of your time, to tell you I don't want to take up too much of your time, let's get going. Article two, to act on the reports of town officers, the motion, Dr. Robinson.
Yes, I move, Mr. Moderator, that the town meeting accept the reports of the town officers.
Thank you, Dr. Robinson. Second. Second, move to the second, done. Mr. DeHern.
Mr. Moderator, I move to amend the motion to read as follows, to accept the reports of the town officers with the exception of the Board of Health.
Do you have that amendment in writing?
I don't, if you request my authority, I can.
Well, okay, everyone knows that.
The written amendment would be to add to the main motion.
Well, if you could come up and write it.
I'm here.
Okay, as we read with the town bylaws, it requires the amendments be in writing. And so if you have an amendment to offer, please write it out so that we know verbatim what we're asking the meeting to vote upon. We now have an amendment to the motion to accept the town report, and that amendment is, I believe, with the exception of the report by the Board of Health, is not accepted. With the exception of the Board of Health. Is there a second to this motion to amend?
Second.
There's a second to the motion to amend. Discussion on the motion to amend. Yes, Mr. DeHern.
Mr. Moderator. Mark, come on.
Yes, working.
Set this off. The annual town reports are--
You have to really put them out.
Our annual town reports are the only official memorialized record of the history of this town as to what takes place in our town government every fiscal year. And the reason I move to amend the main motion is because the Board of Health record is factually incorrect. It states in bold that the Board of Health was not found after several complaints to have violated the open meeting law. And in fact, on two findings from the Attorney General's Office, one on February 11, 2013, and one on November 12, 2013, the Attorney General's Office expressly states that the Board of Health did in fact violate the open meeting law on two separate occasions. And so that's why I make the motion that that report is factually inaccurate and should not become a part of the historic record.
Thank you. Further discussion on the motion to amend to exempt the Board of Health reports from those reports which are being examined. Further discussion on the motion to amend. Ready to vote?
If the question is the Board of Health--
I'm sorry, please rise and identify yourself.
St. Louis K Street, is there a Board of Health member present?
Is there a Board of Health member present who would like to speak to this?
Yes.
Is there a Board of Health member present who would like to speak to this? I'm not seeing any hands go up. Anything else? Ready to vote on the motion to amend? I'm sorry, Mr. Murray.
Ted Murray. Ted Murray, 111 St. Riker Road. If this motion, or if this amendment passes, do we just delete the Board of Health report, or is there some basis by which it can be amended and re-entered? That's unclear to me.
I think we had this discussion last year, and my memory from last year is we're being asked to accept these reports, which are contained here, so I don't think they will no longer be contained here. I think the meeting would not, if it's so amended, and if it passes without amendment, that report was not accepted by the meeting, is my understanding. Anybody want to disagree with my understanding? Yes, Carol. Will you identify yourself?
Rick Carroll, Main Street.
Would you use the microphone?
I know you asked for someone to speak from the Board of Health, and nobody did, but since this report was submitted by the Chair of the Board of Health, Mr. Coulter, who is here, I would actually like to hear him speak to this, if you would.
I don't know what to do, we can't afford to participate. I'm sure he heard my question, he heard the request, and chose not to-- Is there anyone from the Board of Health who wishes to speak to this? Ms. Schwartz, say your hand up.
Here's Leah Schwartz, St. Riker. Could someone--
We have to eat the microphone.
Could somebody-- Could somebody from the Select Board please comment on this amendment?
There's not a desire to comment on this.
Can I move the amendment?
No further discussion? Are you asking to call the questions, is that what you're asking? All right, request to call the question, is that seconded?
Seconded.
That is non-debatable, non-amendable, require two-thirds majority to call the question on whether, on the amendment, which proposes that be accepted, all reports accepted, or to be reported. All in favor of calling the question and stopping debate on the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I find that fail by, that the question is called by, I think it was unanimous. Okay, so, all those in favor of the amendment, this would require a simple majority, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
I find that nays have it. Anybody disagree with that, require a count? No? Okay, the amendment failed. So go back to the main motion, which is to accept the town reports. Dr. Robinson's motion was to accept the town reports. Any discussion? Anybody else who hasn't spoken to this yet?
I haven't spoken, I didn't speak to the main motion.
Are you making a point of order?
No, I did not speak to the main motion, I moved to amend. Now I want to address the main motion.
Okay.
And I just want to be clear on the revenue--
I'm here.
And identify, sorry.
Dave DeHern, Little Lane. I just want to be clear that this body, in the midst of knowing that there is a factual inaccuracy in a historical record, is still willing to vote that record in. So basically, we're saying, we don't care what really happened, as long as we think it happened, even though the papers, the black and white says it did happen.
Okay. Well, that's a good example of what I think shouldn't happen today, because in fact, the meeting, we just got to think for how the meeting voted, but that was close, the members voted on your amendment, so I think that's not what we want to have happen.
No, I, point of order, what I was saying was, why we should move the main, why we should vote down the main motion?
Maybe, I heard it was the same. But is there discussion on the main motion? Ready to vote on the main motion?
Yes.
All in favor of accepting the town report, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
I say that ayes have it. Does anybody want to contest that, need a count? Okay, very good. Article three.
Mr. Moderator?
Moderator.
Mr. Moderator, I move that town can set the salary compensation for all officials of the town, the landlord, Board of Assessors, Board of Health, Moderator, Chief Warden, and Constable, as provided by the Mass General Laws, Chapter 41, Section 108, to be made effective as of July 1, 2014, as contained in the budget.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Now, as is our tradition over the last nine years, I know that, I'd ask Mr. Carter to, do you think a free regulation should be--
Well, this is an annual exercise to accept the chapter and verse of Mass General Laws, saying that the town can set the salaries, or in this case, stipends, for all these positions as according to the law.
Thank you, Mr. Carter. There are recommendations for the Finance Committee.
Yes, Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends in favor of Article three. Unanimous.
Unanimous, thank you, Mr. Carter. Discussion on Article three. To pay out these sumptuous salaries we receive. No discussion, ready to vote? All those in favor of Article three, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
One no. Any extension? Okay, motion carries. Article four, do I hear a motion?
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Carter.
I move that the town authorize the town treasurer with the approval of the Select Board to borrow money from time to time in anticipation of the revenue of the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2014, in accordance with the provisions of General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 4, and to renew any note or notes as may be given for a period of less than one year in accordance with the provisions of General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 17.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Would you like to say anything about it, Mr. Carter?
Yeah, as I understand it, this is also an annual exercise, and the law requires that we approve this every year.
And we should pass you on the meaning of Chapter 44, Section 17.
I do have it, if anyone wants--
Is there a recommendation for the Finance Committee on Article four?
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends this article unanimously.
Thank you, Mr. Murray. Discussion on Article four. Okay. Sounds like there is none, ready to vote? All those in favor of so authorizing the town treasurer with the approval of the Select Board, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Okay, any extensions? That motion carries, Article four. Article five.
Mr. Moderator?
Mr. Carter.
Mr. Moderator, I move the town borrow up to $167,000 for the purpose of purchasing a highway truck, provided, however, that no amount shall be borrowed or expended year under, unless and until the town votes at an election to exempt from the provisions of Mass General Law, Chapter 59, Section 21(c), Proposition 2 and 1/2, so-called, the amounts required to pay for the bonds or notes therefore.
Thank you, is there a second?
I guess I would--
Pregnant buzz. Is there a recommendation by the Finance Committee on Article five?
Yes, Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee unanimously recommends Article five.
Thank you. Mr. Carter.
Sure, sure. This article, in replacing the truck, was where the plan is and has been over the last several years. There's a schedule of what equipment needs to be replaced, and the Chairman of the Finance Committee has passed out that sheet that shows you a continuing schedule. This is keeping up with that. Actually, this truck was put off one year, just because we got hit with that grader last year. But the borrowing is the vehicle that we've been using to replace these vehicles. This truck we want to replace is 20 years old, so we want a newly fully equipped truck to try to keep the oil, the air, and the plow, and so forth. As far as the borrowing goes, it has worked for us. Instead of setting aside money, we haven't ever quite been able to do that, mainly because we haven't been able in the past to have two-and-a-half override, so-called. So this borrowing and the vote that goes with it allows us to pay for this machine over a period of time, and then that drops off as far as having to raise money for it. So it's worked for us in the past, it's going to work for us again this year. A good example, if you're wondering about borrowing, the $88,000, I believe, that we're borrowing when the new grader arrives, hopefully next week, will be borrowed at seven tenths of 1%. So our cost is very minimal.
Thank you, Mr. Carter. So, discussion, questions, Dr. Robinson.
Dr. Robinson, Nortonville Road. When you get a seven-tenth or whatever it was percent of loan, does that loan survive throughout the entire, does that rate apply for as long as the loan is out?
Good question. What we have in the budget, as we get through the budget further, is the $88,000 that we're borrowing for last year's big capital improvement. We're going to borrow that for one year, 12 months, and have that paid off, so that'll be just a one-year note, and it'll be gone, so we'll have room to start paying for the truck. Remember, what's in this article, when we borrow this money, the payments won't be made for that until fiscal '16. We'll be borrowing the money in '15, so the first payment will be on next year's annual budget. Does that help?
Just a question, before you follow up, anybody have trouble hearing Mr. Carter's unamplified voice?
No.
Anybody? Okay, you got to wait there. I'm always trying to force it, it's a lot stronger. Dr. Robinson.
I just want to follow up. If, say, for simplicity, say, we get a 1% loan for the truck this time, will that be 1% over the life of the loan? Let's say we get a 20-year loan, or whatever. Will that be 1% over the 20 years, whatever interest rates in the meantime?
Mr. Moderator. My understanding is that when you enter into a loan agreement to pay for a truck over a three-year period, you can do it in a variety of ways. You can negotiate for an interest rate for a three-year loan, or you can, if you think you're going to be better off or better certified, you can borrow for one year and then renegotiate the next year for another year's loan and so forth. We typically look at this, and we will make a three-year commitment and try to pick the best interest rate. So you might take a little bit more of an interest rate, with interest rates, you know, prospectively going up at this point forward in the year. So you probably wouldn't get a 0.7 interest rate, you might get maybe a 1.5% interest rate for a three-year loan, but that negotiation would hold for, I think, the term of the loan, that's my understanding.
Further discussion? Yes, sir, go ahead.
Ed Lloyd Watson, Spruce Corner Road.
I'm just going to interrupt you. Does anyone object to him not coming up and using the microphone?
I'll tell him.
Let him tell him. Please tell him.
One question, and I'm familiar with other towns in the, in this area, state that have gone for government surplus at zero cost. As the town investigated it, I know this is kind of a special duty, but they do have government vehicles available to whiplaws, I don't know about the special sanding attachment to the truck from the wheel, and that's a nice feature, in terms of that. But one of the points of the old truck was that you had to take the body out, use it as a dump truck, it was very inconvenient, and this one doesn't have that problem. And sympathy for that, but if you have some other dump trucks that are available, then you always have to put them in the plastic films on the adhesive, you could have left this truck as a standard indefinitely, thus reducing its load and its demand during this off-wing proceeding. So I'm just asking, has anybody investigated this, because the town of Worthington has called this government surplus at zero cost, and there is an application for it? has called this government surplus at zero cost, and there is an application for it. We've never seen any facilities here in the county.
Thank you for your question. What's on?
Tom Placeoff, Green Road, also in the higher district of the town. Yes, we've investigated that. We have two vehicles with a highway traffic map, one with a mortar grader and a quadruped dump truck. So we have investigated it, and we have taken advantage of the program, and we're using some of that equipment. With that equipment that you're talking about, I don't think you'd want to use as your main line of upfront fleet that's going to be out there plowing your snow every day, snowstorms and that type of thing. You need something to be a little more reliable and up to date. So that's what we're asking for here. And this truck that we're talking about, replacing, even if we did get another type of truck to do other work and try to keep this one as a sand truck, it's going to be beyond it. We would have to come back to it. The sand unit on it is pretty much junk, the dump body is shot, the engine is very tired. It's just, it's been banging around this town for 20 years. It needs to be replaced.
Thank you. Further discussion. Ready to vote? This vote is going to require two-thirds, downstairs it has to pass by a simple majority, and up here it has to pass by the supermajority of two-thirds, because under the proposition to have statutes for debt exclusion such as this, we are the appropriating authority. Unlike the next two articles where we hear the School Committee just appropriating authority, so those will require a simple majority. So this is our one, two-thirds requirement today, which means we have to count you. I'd like to ask the tellers to come up and thank them in advance. Fay Whitney, Marcin Eisenberg, Nina Kohler, Sammy Lilly, Caroline Murray, Betty Stewart, Jane Shane. And I'll give it over to the town clerk to provide the count. All those in favor of borrowing up to $167,000? I'm sorry. Do you vote for this board yet?
Yes.
Oh, okay. No, that's okay. Finish your organizing and then rise and vote. Deploying troops. I just saved you all a lot of blood flow by waiting to this. All those in favor? Are we good?
We're good.
Are we all deployed? We know what we're doing?
Yes.
All those in favor of having the town borrow up to $167,000 for the purchase, purpose of purchasing a highway truck, please raise one hand and keep it up till I tell you otherwise. All right, you're done. And is there a handout? Thank you. All those who voted aye. Hang on, those who are voting nay. All those who voted nay, we do not wish to authorize the borrowing of up to $167,000 Sorry, it's a slight review. Oh, did I not say it's on your head? I'm so sorry. I am very sorry. So it's 112, yes, five no. The article carries, the motion carries, and the borrowing is off. Thank you. Now we'll move to Article 6.
Emily Robertson, School Committee, at this corner road. Mr. Moderator.
Robinson.
I move the town allow the Mohawk Trail Regional School District to borrow as provided by Mass General Law, Chapter 71, Section 16(c), a sum of money not to exceed $228,850. To be expended under the direction of the School Building Committee for repair work to Sanderson Academy located at 800 Main, Cape Street, Asheville, Massachusetts, to include drainage upgrades, sidewalk replacements, snowbar installation on roofs, window locking and replacement, major service to Biocure Cemetery water treatment condenser unit, replacing totally $228,850, provided however that no amount shall be borrowed or expended here under unless and until the town votes at an election to exempt from the provisions of Mass General Laws, Chapter 59, Section 21(c), Proposition 2 and 1/2 so-called, the amounts required to pay for the bonds or notes therefore.
Thank you. Take a deep breath. Is there a second?
Second.
I heard a second. Would you like to speak to this a little bit before we...
I would like to have you, if you have a green handout, the second one refers to, just like the town has a capital plan, so that you can look years in advance to see what's needed. This is that Mohawk, we're saying, we're sitting there later on going to be talking about Mohawk itself. We projected out 15 years, and this is the first, and we split it into three for five-year phases, and this is the first debate of our town.
Thank you. Finance Committee has their recommendation. Mr. Newell.
Mr. Moderator, Dave Newell, steady lane. First, Mr. Moderator, Major of Finance, we unanimously recommend that the school capital architecture be revised. However, we are mindful to look at your mind that our town is struggling to provide for all its educational costs, operating, capital, location. We'll hear a little bit more on that later. Our nine-town school community is complex. It's our superintendent, I'm sure, is sharing with you. One of them has been a challenge, actively providing for all schools. Just one point to illustrate the challenge of the Finance Committee, so the Finance Committee, do I have to get close? The Finance Committee took a look at our nine towns who collectively and or individually operate seven schools, which are elementary, and our nine-town community is a community of just over 10,000 people. We asked ourselves the question, what about the Massachusetts communities that have a population similar to ours? There is a little over two dozen Massachusetts communities that all maintain high school or are of regional school district. But the average number of elementary schools may include about those 24 other towns, one or two, roughly one and a half, whereas our nine-town community operates, again, collectively and or individually, six elementary schools. Now, I'm just sharing that to illustrate the special challenge that this school system has and the nine towns have. The good side of the ledger is the fact that Mohawk Committee is operating where it is, and you'll want to be following the report, the activities and eventual final report of the Long Range Planning Committee established by the school district. Perhaps our superintendent can speak to what that committee is addressing as it, and put Barry in the mic after this article.
Thank you, Mr. Newell. Is there any objection? Our superintendent and our business manager, district business manager, join. I'm not a member of registered voters here. Any objections to them speaking?
No.
Thank you. Mr. Superintendent, would you like to address Article 5, 6?
Good morning, Michael Bonacani, Superintendent of Schools. And Ron, you've been a part of this, so you can add to what I have to say. So my history goes back to 2005 since joining the district, and so we have looked, we've seen a population decline of about 33% just in those 10 years. And we have beautiful schools, which are in a unique satellite setup in a 250-square-mile region. We're very unique in the state. So it is very expensive to operate the way we're set up, but it is what we are. So until we figure out what the future really holds, we're dealing with this lack of economy and scale that's been what's getting at. So to begin to deal with this, the School Committee did form a committee with representation across all of the towns to look at the many complicated issues that are part of this, to try to figure out a way ahead. Now, that group, if I understand, Joe judged when we would be coming to the School Committee in either May or June to make some recommendations. I do think one of the major areas that they've been looking at has been the regional agreement, and there are some other recommendations that are going to be coming forward from that group. Ron, you want to add anything else to that?
I will. Follow what we have to say.
Nobody heard what he said.
I'll come over and use this microphone.
Thank you.
Because I'm speaking personally. I can't, I'm not going to deliver this message on behalf of the Long Range Planning Committee, okay? It's more of a cullis speaking. But yeah, our situation is very unique in this region. The Long Range Planning Committee is looking at sustainable solutions. The Long Range Planning Committee, which by the way is a special committee under the School Committee, and we need to report back to them, is very active. They meet twice a month. We've had meetings in Eath, Holly, Colrain, Shelburne, because Shelburne downtown tends to be a little more central, and we've even met up here in Asheville. So these are work sessions. It's important for you to understand that there's a lot of data we're analyzing, because you really have to sort your data out and make sure everything's copacetic before you make recommendations. And we're in the process of doing that. Whether it's May or June, I'm not quite certain, but I would say we're two-thirds of the way through the process. I invite the public to listen. Unfortunately, we'll have our back to you because it's a PowerPoint presentation we're working on. Personally, I support this article. One of my obligations as a Select Board member is to protect the assets of the town, and this is a situation like paint and clapboards. If you don't paint those clapboards, then the next time you do maintenance, you're going to have to replace the clapboards. And I think until an asset is no longer an asset in the town, you have to keep it up. So that's my personal opinion. I hope I answered enough on the Long Range Planning Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Kohler. Before we resume discussion, Mr. Plas, I just want to point out what before us is actually whether or not we want to agree to this debt exclusion for $280,000, oh, I'm sorry, $229,000 for repairs at Sanderson. In that context, I'm very appreciative of the Finance Committee and Mr. Newell, in particular, who've done so much work around education and education costs for us. I'm very appreciative of the superintendent's comments, how we're structurally looking forward, but some of the issues are in our district and for the Long Range Planning Committee and Mr. Kohler's efforts to really look at this. That's really not what we're here for today, so I don't get too carried away with that. I know Mr. Plas is another person who has a lot of information, so I'm just going to ride herd a little bit. I'll allow the discussion to encroach on that area, but we really have to get back to whether or not by the simple majority in this case, we authorize as a member of that district for this money to be borrowed by the School Committee, the School District, in order to do the repairs. Mr. Plas.
Phil Plas, K3. I don't have a lot of information, but I have a few, three questions. I'm often protecting assets, but my understanding is that Sanderson Academy is not an asset of Asheville. Sanderson Academy is an asset of the Mohawk School District, so I'm curious why Asheville and Plainfield are the only ones paying for the upgrades to the school as opposed to the entire district, as we are for Mohawk. My other two questions are general questions. We haven't heard this not to the entire budget, what effect all of this has on our tax rate? What kind of projected tax increase are we looking at if we pass all of the tax exemption hurdles? And my third question is, I didn't hear clearly why we're not using any stabilization to offset any of the budget.
Thank you, Mr. Plas. The first, all three of those are questions, why should Asheville and Plainfield, not only the building, be made with this shit?
It's true that the building itself is under the authority of the School Committee under the region, but if you look into the regional agreement bill, it also says the towns of Asheville and Plainfield are financially responsible for that asset. The purpose of that building is for the children to match build that Plainfield.
Thank you. As to the tax rate question, Mr. Plas, Mr. Carter.
So the tax rate question is a great question. Last year, we went through all kinds of contortions and equations to try to have an idea of how much the tax rate was going to go up last year. And I believe we came up with 74 cents. And it really doesn't work out that way, because what happened in the meantime is the valuation of the property in town dropped by nearly $2 million. Is that correct? I'm looking at the chair and of the assessors. So when the valuation drops, the tax rate goes up, because it's the number of dollars. It's always the number of dollars that we vote that have to be raised, and the assessors work to make sure it's spread out evenly. So since we're looking at about the same amount of increase in the budget this year over last year, if you want me to say a number, I'll say 74 or 80 cents, but that may not have any relationship. If the valuation in town goes up $4 million, and we are looking at a major revaluation here coming up, you know, the tax rate could actually drop. So it's the number of dollars. I understand everybody looking at the rate, but like I tell people, I've never had to pay a rate. I always have to pay the bill. So it's the number of dollars.
Thank you, Mr. Carter. Mr. Hurt, then Mr. Elwell.
Mr. Hurt, I'll thank him. So my question piggybacks on bills. If the tax rate stays even, how much of... If the tax rate stays even, how much of an increase in the individual tax bill occurs because of these debt exclusions?
Carter?
Well, that, I think I can answer you from my own experience because I take the numbers back to what my tax bill is. And I figured my tax bill will go up about $350. $350 a year.
Mr. Newell, then respond to Mr. Hertz. And then Mr. Elwell.
Yes.
Thank you.
Bear in mind, Mr. Hertz, that for the fiscal year 15 budget, this will not affect a rate for fiscal 15. The first payment will not come until fiscal 2016.
I'm sorry. Thank you, Mr. Newell. I think the superintendent wanted to speak to that as well. Do you want to?
Well, I'm sorry, Michael Bonacani, Superintendent of Schools, that wasn't one of the reasons to listen over the phone. I just wanted to make sure that you understood that this vote, similar to the vote that you just took on the truck, will affect your capital assessment next year in FY16, not in FY15.
And that's what you said, Mr. Newell?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Carter, on that same issue? Okay, I didn't forget about you, Mr. Elwell. Go ahead, Mr. Carter.
So getting back to the motion about borrowing, I have a different perspective on borrowing. And my perspective on, I know we're talking about Article 6, but Article 6 and 7, I don't support. And I don't support it because we know that we have a problem with our budget and the structure of our school system the way it is as far as towns being able to afford it. And by holding off until we have a report from the Long Range Planning Committee and have an idea of what tough decisions have to be made on education, I think authorizing this borrowing is much the same as coming up to a stop sign and stepping on the gas. All right? I think we can hold back. If the Long Range Planning Committee and the school committee are in a position to have the data and make decisions, and I think some of these decisions will be very difficult. That if we have that information and know what direction our education system in the Mohawk Trail District is going to go in, that it would be a lot better to hold back. I really do believe that holding back on this borrowing and letting these expenses just keep going forward, all the towns in the district will lose whatever leverage we have to get the school scraped out. I am really waiting for the day when we can say we're really spending more money on education and less on facilities.
Okay, so I want to be clear.
Order, Mr. Plasman?
Yes.
You've passed it in town meeting. I've understood that the giving of minority reports is not taken. And I'm a little confused because I assume that because of these articles on the warrant, there was a majority vote and the select board approved them, and a minority report has just been given. My question is, are we now accepting minority reports from warrants?
Not formally, but I recognize Mr. Carter because he said he wanted to speak to the, so let me just explain. I think what you know is this article came onto the warrant because the select board voted two to one to place it on the warrant. The Finance Committee told us that they approve it five to nothing, notwithstanding, actually, I can spare a say, notwithstanding some concerns about the structural arrangement that Mr. Carter, and he changed that. Mr. Koller and the Long Range Planning Committee are looking at exactly that. The superintendent spoke to that. Mr. Carter then offered his own as one select board, as a minority select board comment, and then had a point of order asking whether we're formally accepting minority reports, and the answer is no. I didn't know what Mr. Carter was going to say, but literally he's saying, these are the reasons why he voted against it. So I think that's okay. Now that I've caught my breath, I want to get back to two people. One is Mr. Plasman. I will return to the stabilization question, the third part of your question. But poor Mr. Elwell has waited for it a very long time. Mr. Elwell?
Will Elwell from Baton Rouge. I'm a little confused on the article because it says, in response to Phil Plasman's plan, it says the town vote to allow the Mohawk Trail District to borrow the money. So it's not the town that's borrowing the money. So I'm a little confused about that. And also, how that figure in Article 6 related to the long-term financial planning? Is that in that spreadsheet or not?
Thank you. I think Superintendent Koller might have prepared to speak to the first part of Mr. Elwell's question.
It is true that the amount would be, the school committee would be borrowing the money. But the school committee cannot borrow the money without the authorization of the town. That goes back to the regional agreement language.
Of all the towns, correct?
This is for all of them.
So if any one town says no, it can't borrow the money?
That's correct.
Okay. So, and it's for that reason that we're only going to have to vote by a simple majority instead of two-thirds, which the borrowing entity would have to approve it by? As to the second part of the trail, a lot of questions, Mr. Hertz?
Yes, Mr. Moderator. I want to respond directly to Mr. Elwell. That projected debt is within the spreadsheet that we started developing. And one other thing you'll notice is that if you return to that particular spreadsheet, you'll see that this particular article is reflected in terms of what's called Sanderson Academy maintenance slash upgrades that will be completed by 2020. And what you'll see is on that draw, it starts out at $37,494 that will be paid in fiscal year 2016. That's a year from now, not this coming year. And that same amount would be paid out in level payments for five years' time and then stopped because the assumption is that our vote today, which the Finance Committee does recommend, is authorizing the school committee to do the borrowing. And then the borrowing that they do on behalf of Sanderson would be assessed back to the two towns that benefit from Sanderson, just as they do with their regular school operating budget, whether it be Plainfield and Ashfield. Ashfield, of course, uses the school more than Plainfield, so we get a disproportionate, well, not disproportionate, but a proportionally large share of that debt service. Now, that debt service only lasts for five years because it's only designed to pay for the first five years of a 15-year scheduled maintenance program. And so what would happen is that in five years' time, the school committee would probably come back and say to us, it's time for the second phase, and now we need to go out for another debt issue that we would hope you would approve for the second five years of maintenance, capital upgrades, and so forth, to keep this Sanderson Academy functioning and well-kept up. So that now bears on a response that I'll make to, I think, Mr. Carter's concern about calling the question, in effect, right now on the school system. The Finance Committee felt that, yes, there were some issues about long-term financing and sustainability, but that in a sense, with Mr. Koller's attitude, we ought to keep up this asset until such time as we hear more fully back from this Long Range Study Committee. And if at that time they conclude, you know, in the long term, these schools need to be substantially revised, perhaps some would have to be phased out over time. And that seems to be the time that we would then relook at this. And so what you're signing up for, what we would be signing up for here is only a five-year program of debt, after which we would look at it again. And by that point, we might have enough data by which we'd say, we can make more use of these schools in a different, creative way, or we might actually have to come to the stage of closing down some, one of which might be Sanderson. And I know that's an uncomfortable reality to confront, but I think that's the kind of hard decision that will be ahead of us in some years' time. So the Finance Committee thinks for the time being, we should try to afford to pay for this debt in order to keep the school up as long as we're going to be using it.
Thank you, Mr. Hertz. I think the only thing that's still out there is Mr. Plasman's question about stabilization, is that correct? So would you like to add, why not stabilization?
If I may, our intention, as we looked at stabilization and free cash, for a time, we did talk about using some of the stabilization funds for some of these projects. Our conclusion was, stabilization is one of these funds that requires a two-thirds vote to take the money out of it. And that in some sense, it's the most secure form of reserve you've got for a leave out of town. And with the fact that we had at one point nearly over $300,000 in free cash, which could be taken out and spent more readily, we thought we ought to utilize free cash while we could here as long as we did not get below something on the order of $65,000 in free cash balance. So our view was that free cash was the more appropriate fund for which to take and use in the budgeting process. And we felt there was a proof in keeping the stabilization fund stable for a period until such time as we really needed it to unfold.
Thank you, Mr. Hertz. Now, I saw Mr. LaGoye was out this warrant. But I really want to remind you, today, we're not going to resolve the issues about the structure of the agreement among the towns that form the district. So while we all understand the issues of, that there are substantial issues, that we need to be attentive to the Long Range Committee's suggestions, this is not the time where we're going to vindicate that. We're being asked whether or not we should borrow money in order to do the repairs that are alluded to in the article. We understand that, Mr. Carter, at one view. We understand that the Finance Committee recognizes that view, but notwithstanding that, recognize it, and I ask that we speak to the debt exclusion issue. So, Mr. LaGoye, I got you.
Ed LaGoye, Watson's Creek, Corner Road. My question on this, I need your feedback upfront. These are all contingent on an approval for an overrun of two and a half, an extension from the two and a half restrictions. Now, I'm not against doing some of the things, but we have to contain our cost here in taxes. So I'm giving on vote against the two and a half extension. So if we all do that, what happens to all the others?
Okay, remember, it's a debt exclusion, not an override of two and a half.
Well, we have a diesel pullout of it. It's effective, we allow you to go with two and a half, you use the two and a half for all your current town budgets, and just run these down the road, putting gas on at the stop sign.
Each of these will require passage downstairs by a majority? The highway, one to pass by two-thirds up here. Each of the two we're considering right now for the district, the school district, will have to pass by a simple majority up here in order for half members of the district, in order for the committee to be able, the school committee, the school district to be able to make the change. Everybody understand what I just said? Because I already did. So, anybody looking behind to Mr. LaGoye's, I guess it was a question. What happens if it fails downstairs? It's over. Doesn't catch. Even if it passes up here, if it fails downstairs, we can't exclude that debt. So we won't borrow the money. Do you want to add anything?
Got it.
That's it. So then, how?
Judy Hop, Watson's Creek, Corner Road, and my question, regarding Tom's comments, is what is the long-term planning time fund? When will we get an answer, whether we have to close Sanderson or not?
I'll speak all that. I don't want to keep pulling it out of the subject at hand here, but the Long Range Planning Committee does report to the school committee. It will give a recommendation to the school committee with our findings, so on and so forth. It's a very complicated situation because the regional agreement is both our friend and our enemy. And the reason it's very difficult is because it kind of defines democracy. It has to be unanimous vote by all the towns, and this has come up in the past also. So it's a very, very difficult situation of which the regional agreement is at the core of. And I really, really recommend that everyone in this room become active in the regional agreement. And the special, the Long Range Planning Committee, I'm actually an appointee of the select board. So unlike committees in the past, we tried to get every single town of the regional district involved so that when that day comes to say, okay, let's modify the regional agreement, one town won't say, sorry. And there will be no targeted schools probably before that vote. It'll be a vote to cross your fingers and vote for democracy, is what it'll be. That's the core of the issue with Long Range Planning. We're about two-thirds of the way through the process. Please come to the meetings and in the public comment section, express your concern, but get the word out because it will come, that regional agreement for modifications. And if one town votes against it, it's off the books. So if one, the modification is off the books.
So I think the answer is we don't know yet. I got you, Celia Schwartz, then Mrs. Elwell. Oh, I'm sorry. Do you want to speak to that? I'm sorry. Hang on, folks. The superintendent has something to add to Mr. Koller's comment.
I think some of the questions really pertains to what's going to happen over the next five years because that's what this vote is really related to. Even in any building consolidation issue that you might imagine, I can't imagine one where we would close down the Mohawk Trail Regional Middle School, High School. So that's on your next vote. So you're really talking more about the elementary schools, the smaller schools. Based on my understanding of the law, the regional agreement, the local politics, my opinion is it's very unlikely that within this next five years, you would see any dramatic change in the infrastructure of the school district. I think that goes to the heart of your question now. If there is going to be closure of schools, I think it's much more likely it's going to take three to four years to get there, and you would see that plan begin to take place between five and 10 years out.
Thank you, Mr. Koller. Celia Schwartz, followed by Zana Elwell, can you yell?
Yes, sure. Celia Schwartz, here to go. So Sanderson is a relatively new, I still would like an answer as to a timeframe for when we think that Long Range Planning Report will be done. I didn't hear that. That's my first question. My second question is, Sanderson is a relatively new building, and I just quickly calculated about $200,000 between Mohawk and Sanderson for repairing flashing and cocking to windows. For a relatively new building, I'm assuming we're past our warranty for the work, but were there design flaws? Were there defective materials? It makes no sense to me that we would have these kinds of repairs on a relatively new building. And so I'm wondering, is the carpet faulty? Was the flashing not installed properly?
Okay, thank you. As to the first part of this question, I think what I heard, correct me if I'm wrong, is it because of the democratic nature and the cumbersome, complicated nature of the dialogue within that long-range planning? You can't predict its time because they happen at a decision. And so the best we can do is move that process forward. Is that what you said?
I'm sorry, Mr. Moderator, it isn't. I was talking about the regional agreement with respect to the democratic process. The committee is very focused. We're about two-thirds of the way through. I will say, our final recommendations to the school committee will happen before December of this year. Okay? I don't know exactly when. We're working on it.
Okay, thank you. As to the specification of the repair, because of faulty workmanship, this vote, one night.
I want to choose my words carefully here, okay? Because I know that the people that did the work to build the facilities that we have did the best that they could. So there's no willful negligence. We're way beyond warranty, so let's start from there. But the largest cost item, if you look at your green sheets, is the $100,000 for the window flashing details. My understanding is that we didn't install window flashing to begin with, which is obviously a mistake that should have happened. So that's a correction to a design. You'll also see that in parentheses, we have MSBA there. Seeing that as a particularly expensive issue within here, we have applied for special MSBA funding to try to pay for two-thirds MSBA funding to try to pay for two-thirds of that. We won't know whether MSBA will grant us those monies for probably three to four months. So, it is possible that even if you were to approve these numbers, if we get that MSBA funding, your capital assessment will go down.
Thank you. Donna Elwell is there?
Hi, hello. As we're trying to consider these increases in the tax levy essentially, because we have to vote on these questions downstairs, I'm just wondering, are there any people in Asheville that are at risk of losing their property because they can't pay their taxes now? And if there are, how many people?
Who would like to address that? Carter? Did anybody hear the question?
The best answer, and I appreciate the question, because I think that's something that we struggle with the whole time that we're putting budget together, is what effect this is going to have, and how it's going to relate to people as far as what they have to come up with for taxes. I think the real, the answer has to be that everyone is always at risk, all right? Depending on personal situations, general loss of a job, all these sorts of things, everyone is always at risk for this. I will tell you that during our review of the books and going through the auditor's report, I'm amazed at the money over the years, how small the amount of money is that goes uncollected. We have done a great job in the town of Asheville, people have participated, and for the amount of money that's levy, the amount of money over the years that's left outstanding when you go back five years is really relatively small. I mean, someone would look at it and say, well, $150,000 is a lot of money, but when you think about the total amount of dollars that we levy, it's a very small percentage. So, are there people at risk? My answer is, in my opinion, I think everybody's at risk. But the town of Asheville, people have been participating very well, and as far as taxes that aren't paid, I feel it's a very low percentage of what we put out for.
Thank you. Mr. Cutter's hand has been up for a while. Are you replying, responding to that? Mr. Cutter, could you wait while we do? We, we're going to, I'm going to, I'll get you, I'll follow up. Hang on. It's 11:30, and we're on Article Six of thirty-six. This is an important discussion, everything has been relevant, but just be as mindful as I'm trying to be, that we have a full plate today. Mr. Murray wants to amplify or reinforce with his criticism?
Yes, this confirms what Mr. Carter has said. This past week, I had a communication with our tax collector, and she informed me that typically, we are able to collect 97% of the taxes each year, so there is technically about 3% tax delinquency, and that, I think, confirms that we are doing quite well. But that does not change, say, what Mr. Carter said, and that is that we're all at some risk, and that as we raise taxes, comes a point where some people may have real difficulty in being able to afford. But so far, we have been very successful in collecting taxes.
Thank you. Mr. Cutter has waited since last year at this meeting, so.
Jim Keller, twenty-one, Delphine Hill, Chief Moderator. My question for the long-range committee is, has there been any consideration of the potential negative impact on land valuation and hence tax revenue from the proposed pipeline projects that are going through the moment? And the impact?
Regrettably, I think I'm going to have to go with the article. I think that this is a work of the long, I think we've got as far as we can at the work of the long-range planning committee. I think we just have to decide whether to authorize the school district to borrow this money, as much as I think there are important other issues that we might talk about, including that one. I think I just have to rule it out of the scope, I'm sorry, Mr. Cutter. Yes, I can't see whose hand it is.
I'm Pauline Plain, Crystal Road, and I worked at, worked at Mohawk Trail, and I can now hear that I've worked with Paulma. I think that we need to get MIT taxes here, and I understand there's some long-term issues. I think we have to bring it back to the children of the district, that while we're discussing over the next five years, what's going to happen to the buildings, and I know that we have to make some hard decisions, every day, our children are going to school, every day, many of the people who live in Asheville work at the school, and the quality of their lives needs to be that they, I know that there are staff that I can look at, that will go to the school and wear knitwear hats and coach the school, that, you know, there, I think that we need, if we need five years, decide what's going to happen, we need the children in first, second, and third grade, seventh, eighth, and ninth grade to have a safe and pleasant environment. You know, if you look at, are you doing the park a lot? Well, they have the baseball team out there. We need a, we need a safe service that would be, you know, we need windows that are tight so that the children are comfortable. They're going to school every time of day, and their lives don't stop. They, you know, they might be always in school by the time, and besides, so I think that there are a lot of issues with the way that we're impacted, but I think, you know, there is a risk of a tax going up, and children are at risk if they don't have a healthy environment. And I know with Mohawk, and it's done a lot of repairs, some maybe because of child work, but if a child is unprepared, it makes better. I mean, there are some times where they take classrooms out of the library because the classrooms are so old that they can't even access them. That's not right. So, I think that we need to have a healthy environment for us to learn.
Thank you, Mr. Cutter. Yeah, Mr. Clark?
I move the question.
Move to call the question?
Yes.
Cut off debate for a second?
Second.
This is non-debatable, non-amendable, will require a two-thirds majority, motion to cut off debate and vote on the main motion. All in favor of cutting off debate, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
I would say that two-thirds said aye. Does anybody disagree with that ruling? Okay, we won't count the, and calling of the question is allowed, and we'll go to the main motion. They might need me to raise a few more motion, more. All those in favor of the town allowing the school district to borrow a sum not to exceed $228,850 to be used to repair Sanderson Academy as described, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Yes.
No.
Okay. Do you think we have to do a show hand or? I'd say it's a majority. Does anybody disagree if I say it's a majority? Raise your hand if you disagree with my determination that it's a majority. Okay, I see one, so we have to do a count. All right, so the tellers, please. Okay, all those in favor of allowing the district to borrow that money, please raise your hand and keep it up until it's counted. I'll pay more careful attention to get them down.
Yes.
Thank you very much, may they put their hands down? Okay, all those opposed, please raise your hand and keep it up, and I'll remember it. We're on to Article Seven, thank you for a very good discussion.
Okay, I'm Stella Molly Robertson, School Committee, Baptist Corner Road, Mr. Moderator. I move the town allow the Mohawk Trail Regional School District to borrow as provided in Mass. General Law, Chapter Seventy-One, Section Sixteen B, a sum of money not to exceed $542,778, to be expended under the direction of the School Building Committee for the fair work to the Mohawk Trail Regional Middle and High School located at twenty-six Asheville Road in Austin, Massachusetts, to include drainage upgrades, parking lot resourcing, beplanted with caulking marks, floor replacement, heating, ventilation, and air conditioning upgrades, auditory lighting equipment upgrades, and installation of separate needs of egress from the main electrical switchgear room, totaling $542,778, provided, however, that no amount shall be borrowed or expended here or there unless and until the town votes out of election to exempt from the provisions of Mass. General Law, Chapter Fifty-Nine, Section Twenty-One C, Proposition Two and a Half, so-called the amounts required to pay for the laws or notes therefore.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made in seconded. Would you like to speak to this?
So, this is the blue handout, and I just want everyone to be aware that, yes, $500,000 is a lot of money, but that is to be divided among all of the district towns. Asheville's share is estimated, is estimated in about $18,676.
I, I, anybody heard that?
Asheville's share of that is estimated to work out over a five-year period of $18,676 per year.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Carter. I'm going to answer a recommendation from the finance committee.
The finance committee recommended by, how do you look at this, please? Can I speak to it a little bit further?
Yes, Mr. Carter, I'm just going to, a tough one, I just have to share to move along, and I think what the adjutant of the meeting wants me to say right now is this, we understand the reservation that has to do with the structural district and the issues that have to be dealt with in that context, and that both are enemy and friend, as a good friend, etc. But I really would like to steer away from that and focus on the question at hand, whether to authorize the file of the by the district, given Asheville's share, etc. Thank you. Speak away.
Understood. So, the finance committee, as we look at this, we, again, we're looking at, you know, keeping our buildings up and so on, as Superintendent Monacotti said, we, there's no, looking, you know, we're not going to close down the high school or the middle school. So, this is definitely a building that we're going to be keeping up for the long term. So, for us, it's, you know, a lot simpler to recommend this one because it's a long-term issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carter. Discussion.
Look, Mr. Carter, just to clarify for myself, I heard that.
You're still David DeHerron.
Yes, David DeHerron, I'm still a fellow man. The $542,778 is the total number for the entire district, and Asheville, if we fix, will all be responsible for a particular percentage of that amount every year.
Correct. Further discussion? You ready to vote? This also will require a simple majority to pass. All those in favor of allowing the Mohawk Trail Regional School District to borrow a sum not to exceed $542,778 for repair work at the high school, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
No.
I would say that the ayes have, anybody disagree? Want me to count? Okay, Article Seven, Paris. Article Eight, is there a motion?
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Carter.
Mr. Moderator, I move the town raise and appropriate $1,000 to pay for school committee stipend, $61,978 for educational capital expenses, $16,626 for green roof capital, and raise and appropriate $457,569, and transfer $80,000 from free cash for a total of $537,569 for vocational school expenses.
Is there a second? Before we discuss this, I would just like to tell Mrs. Doyle and Mrs. Robertson that in my handwritten notes, the stipend to you was $537,000, and what you're paying for vocational was $1,000, so. They all want to be right on your hands, but anyway, who would like to give a pre-explanation for what we hear from the finance committee? Well, let's hear it from the finance committee.
Well, if you liked the last round, you'll really love this one. We've got a little bit of a problem here, and I'm going to, first of all, say that the finance committee, Mr. Moderator, recommends the article unanimously.
Thank you.
This is nearly a quarter million dollar increase in vocational education, but I think we're obligated to give you an explanation as to what's going on, and first of all, the school expenses are up and dropping simple, the $61,000, $16,000 for creations, those are capital assessments, no major changes there, those are for projects, school projects that have been completed previously. Obviously, your attention, I'm sure, is being drawn to the vocational charge, which is a 68% increase from our meeting of last year, and I'm sure you're all wondering what the heck's going on. First of all, to help you understand what is going on, is that Asheville still maintains a school department. We don't have a school under jurisdiction, but we have a school budget, and we have school students that we're responsible for, and consequently, we need some appropriation. What makes it a little slippery and tricky is that we no longer have a local school committee. So, for the last year, the finance committee has rolled its sleeves up and assumes with support from the SLU Board, oversight, board oversight of our vocational school department. What has happened this year, I think, can be best called a perfect storm, a coincidence of events that all are coming. of events that all are coming into focus all at once in one year to illustrate. Currently, we, as a town, have responsibility for the education of students who qualify for and wish to have vocational education. Uh, for years, our children who worked in education and trades or agriculture have attended Franklin Tech, the Turner's Falls, and Smith Vocational Agricultural in North Hampton. Things are complicated in one sense because our nine-town school community comprising Mohawk, uh, went different, in different directions back in the seventies when the tech district was formed. Five of the nine towns opted to join Franklin Regional Tech, and four did not, Asheville, Plainfield, Charlemagne Hall. These towns, our town included, uh, provide for the vocational of our children, uh, the tuition arrangement, so the town is responsible for the payment of the tuition and the transportation. I think this is a national phenomenon, and it's certainly happening here locally. My first flight on, uh, the Finance Committee back about 10 years ago, I pulled out a report and, uh, we were preparing the budget for eight students that we would tuition to the local schools. Currently, we've got 14, ten dollars net, four going to Smith. Next year, we project a minimum of 22, that is, say, 50, 70% increase in students. So that's one part of a perfect storm. Every five years, Mohawk, which brokers the transportation or not we have, goes to bed for busing, and we are handed a fifth year of a five-year contract, Mohawk. And bids were tendered this last fall, and a contract has been awarded, and for a variety of reasons, uh, transportation costs will rise. One of our roots, tech in this case, is, uh, that's going to be 57% as well. We're looking at stiff tuition increases, particularly from Smith School, a 13% increase in tuition per student for next year. And what's going on, uh, one of the things we attempted to do to try to contend with these costs, uh, is, and I think Asheville is taking the lead, is deep resurrecting an advisory committee to help, uh, get the greater cooperation between the four towns that tuition. So our advisory committee has been up and running for one year, and we have rights for Plainfield, Hall, and Charlemagne. And one of the things we've been able to focus on is to reduce rents, to cooperate more, and, and look for other economies to help, uh, conserve expense. What's happening here in Asheville has also happened in Halling and in Charlemagne. In fact, burn rolls are projected to double from right now to next year. So consequently, the students who are being bused, all of us, we're, we're likely going from, this year, we're, our four-town consortium is transporting about 30 students. Next year, we will be up in the 50s. That is going to require, in some cases, moving up from a minibus, or from a van, a passenger van, to a minibus, because we've just got so many more students. Next year, we expect, uh, 16 students at Franklin Tech alone, and we're not going to transport 16 students necessarily with a naked passenger van. Now, working with the Select Board and the Ministerial Committee and Finance Committee and stuff, we're going to be looking at ways to attempt to contain these costs, and you guys have ideas. But for right now, my friends and neighbors, um, we've got a job to do. Making a mistake, the Finance Committee has committed to these students, the same as we did to the Mohawk students. Make no mistake, we recommend the appropriation, and I thought we deserve an explanation as to why, so that's pretty much it.
Thank you, because you know that is very important. Um, discussion on the motion, which is, uh, sorry, did I hear? Discussion on the motion. Mr. DeHerr.
I, I understand what you said, that the faculty said, this town leadership decision is now a possibility over $80,000. As the board of the town comes into whether or not we are able to join vocational school group, and if we were able to, what would the amount of cost to the town be?
Mr. Moderator. Please.
We, we've looked at this previously, David, and I think you were careful to look at it currently and, and interacting, uh, with Franklin Tech officials to get updated numbers. The short answer is, it is probably not going to be in our financial interest to do that. Part of the problem is that if we were to consider late membership, uh, we are going to be responsible for a public capital back charge or buying. Then we become responsible for capital assessments. We also, by doing that, would lose nearly $100,000 a year of Chapter 7 revenue that comes to the town, which is a form of, um, school aid, general aid education is what it's called. Because we have a school department, we don't carry all of this cost. We do have some vocational reimbursement and some general aid education. There's another wrinkle, and, um, the wrinkle is, and this is what I'm looking at currently, I looked at this 10 years ago, and I think it's time to update. How, if we were to do that, what would our per-student costs be on the net in terms of what you folks have to pay for the general levy compared to if we were a member of the region? What would the assessment per student be 10 years ago within our interests, you know, outside? Now things have tended to even up, actually gone a little bit, but the so-called direct savings are not very large, then we have to go back to the loss of revenue and, um, to the capital assessments we then are going to be slapped with plus the sizable buying costs that we feed. Short answer? You know, we're going to keep looking at it, but it doesn't look good.
Okay, once again, is a relevant question, is a relevant inquiry? I just don't think that the 32 articles on the mark, we can go too deeply down that structural road for another day. You couldn't go down that road. Mr. Carter. I've got any good choice?
I, I am going to address the motion and vocational expenses. As I alluded to at the beginning of the meeting, $217,000 increase in vocational expenses is a tough pill to swallow. But if you step back and take a bigger view of the town's finances over the last three years, since our populations change on students that elect to go to vocational school and get that type of education, it is a very cyclical run. And if you look at last year, we were able to put $200,000 into stabilization. If you really follow the budget back over the two years prior to that, that savings, that $200,000 actually came from savings in vocational education when the populations were down. So you, you can see that, that even though maybe we didn't know it, we ended up being pretty clever, right? We took that money and saved it over here, and, but unfortunately, our expenses are going up. So, uh, it, like Ron said a little while ago, it's our friend and our enemy. As our populations go down over the next five years possibly, our expenses will go down.
Thank you, everybody. Words.
This is a question I've asked before, but I'll ask it again. Why, why can't, I think vocational education is really important, but I'm wondering why we can't offer one school to be tuitioned into, and then the others have school choice if they want to go to the others? That would certainly cut our costs down and still offer options. And if the second school doesn't have school choice, then we should push them to have that, because it seems like a big part of this is the transportation going to both places.
I'll address it.
Equipment?
Yes, equipment.
I think, I think one of the things is, uh, uh, again, you know, a blessing and a curse is our geographical location, and the difference in curriculums at the two schools. You know, to offer a vocational education to a student that wants one, that is not in the field that they, they want to pursue, is worthless. So, and historically, the difference in tuitions between the two schools are relatively small. So the way we're doing it now with tuitions, we've got two different schools, two different curriculums to a, a great extent, um, and, uh, so they're offered a whole lot more than just belonging to Franklin Tech, let's say.
Thank you, Mr. Carter. Bill Elwell.
Uh, Bill Elwell from Baptist Corner Road. I'm just curious, um, from the superintendent's standpoint, why we've got students going to places where they want to get information and education, why can't, with the decrease in the amount of use of the buildings, say in Mohawk, why couldn't we develop a vocational part of that school and keep the students here and take that money instead to invest in that?
Do I have to answer that? That's a complicated question. It goes back to when vocational regional schools were put together. So you would have to break that model that exists right now. There's, there's no legal, there's nothing legally stopping the district from pulling back Chapter 74 programs. A lot of people put a lot of thought into the creation of the, the voc-tech schools going back into the seventies, I believe is when they came about. So it's not something that you could do very quickly, but it's legally possible.
Yeah, okay, are, are we ready to vote?
Yes.
Okay. This is simple majority. All those in favor of, um, a total of $537,569 for vocational school expenses, um, $80,000 of which from free cash and the balance from raising and appropriating the money, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Okay. Motion carries. Thank you. Article 9.
Mr. Moderator, I move the town raise and appropriate $1,949,819 to pay for regional educational expenses.
A second.
Second.
We have handouts, who would like to speak to this? That means $2 million are under arrest.
So the good news is it's not a 68% increase. It's a 2.81% increase in the town. Let me back up just a little bit, because I've got a gold sheet, if you have a gold sheet, please pull that out. I just want to give you some, a 10-year perspective before we get into current operating statement, because you have an operating budget. I did want to give you a sense of what's happened with the, with the student enrollment since, over the past 10 years. So over 10 years, it's been about a 33% increase in student enrollment. You'll notice there's a, there's a typo actually on this sheet. On the left side, for FY '15, I, I had a projection of 959 students for the upcoming school year, and that was a good number going back to February. Between February and today, uh, through school choice as well as children that have moved into the district, that number's gone up by 30. The actual, the correct number is what you see at the top, which is projecting at 989, which would be actually a slight increase from our, from our current enrollment. So over a 10-year period of time, you can see that there's some peaks and valleys with the, uh, with the budget, but that over the course of that most 10 years, the average increase has been just over 1%. So even with that decline in students, if you have a class of, say, 18 students, and you go down to 15 students, you lose three students, but you still need a teacher for the same, for that classroom. So this is where we get into the economy of scale issues. So you can't look at that 33% decrease and expect to be able to reduce the budget proportionally. You'll also note, if you look at the town assessment history, this is the collective assessment history for all the towns together, that number has averaged to be 2.37%. So we've worked really, really hard to keep the assessments under 2.5, in particular because of the 2.5 override issues. But you'll note that the town portion is higher than the actual budget, and that is because, because our enrollment has been decreasing, our chapters, our state funding has been flat, and real increases have been going up. So the towns are paying an increasing proportion of the budget. So please flip over to the next side of the page. So the School Committee is very mindful of how this is affecting the towns, and there has been an increase in collaboration with the Select Boards and the Finance Committees in the preparation of the school budget. So the overall budget is a 2.08% increase. Again, the proportion that's being built to the town is higher than that number because of the revenue stream being left to the state. So the town portion is 3.35%. And then Asheville's portion, which is based on the regional agreement, and the portions of populations averaged over five years, is, is a bit less than that, it's 2.81%. Now Asheville's 10-year history is, is the bottom piece, I wanted you to see what the town of Asheville has been paying. So over the course of, again, peaks and valleys, over a 10-year period, the town's average increase has been 2.05%.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Superintendent. Is there a recommendation from the Finance Committee?
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends this Article unanimously.
Thank you. Discussion. Yes, Mr. Plasse.
Phil Plasse, Katie Free. Just want to say that our educational expenses this year will be about 58% of our budget. So I think it is worth a discussion because it's the biggest part of our budget. Can I just hear a breakout of what the Sanderson expenses, you know, we got 1.9 million, but how much of that Sanderson, how much is Mohawk?
Phil, we don't separate, separate the budget out of the building, that's what you're asking?
You should.
You're, you're asking, what is Sanderson Academy's assessment?
No, 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 no. How much of the 1.9 million?
I'm sorry, please, right.
How much of the 1.9 million is for Sanderson and how much is for Mohawk? We've always had that. Since we're looking at over $80,000 for votes, I'm curious how, how much we're spending.
Would you like to try to figure that out while we're having another question? You got it. Joy and Lyra, business manager of the district.
No, actually, just give us a couple minutes, I'll come back to it.
Phil, come back to your question. Other discussion. Phil, you won't come back. Mr. Elwell.
Uh, Bill Elwell from Baptist Corner Road. I'm curious to know if any of this includes, uh, focus on security for the schools, whether that's part of the budget.
Does any of this include a focus on security for schools?
There's not a particular focus on security for the schools. When I came to the district 10 years ago, that was one of the things that we started on right away, was just putting in reasonable precautions for the children, front door weather system. Sanderson was one of the elementary schools that had a front door weather system when I arrived, that was baked into the, uh, the plan for building the school. So there's not a particular spike, if you're alluding to some of the issues that happened in Connecticut, actually, in particular. I've been very, very mindful of our student safety right along, to spread those costs over time, so it's not... over time, so it's not a disproportionate part of it. It's embedded in the budget every year within the facility.
Um, so seeing if we can answer Mr. Pless's question about the portion. I, I also want to remind people, uh, the superintendent has been in Asheville for one o'clock meeting, is that right?
Yes, sir.
Um, but this is important, so. For other questions? Comments? Ms. Schwartz.
Um, here's Ms. Schwartz, three oh five, six thirty. This is to the superintendent. Um, so it's a two-point-eight-one percent increase for Asheville, so can you talk to the specifics of what are those cost increase? Have you had decreased funding, um, from the feds or the state? Can you give a little more filling in of the picture?
Forgive me, I was processing Phil's question at the same time. Want, want to know what individual lines have gone up from last year?
I want to know a general sense of what this is attributed to. Is it increased, you know, some years coming you say it's health insurance, some years coming you say it's special ed. I'd like to know what, this is almost three percent increase. What is, what's the picture? What's it for? Have you had decreased funding? Is that impacted at all?
There isn't actually a particular spike. Uh, the operations line has gone up six-point-three percent. That would be going toward building, building-related issues, oil heating, custodial expenses. Uh, the largest increase is actually in transportation. That's a seven-point-one percent increase. The reason for that goes to what Mr. Gold was talking about earlier with our new five-year contract. It was, it was a hefty increase in what, in where the bids came in.
I hope that answered your question. Are we through with Mr. Pless's answer before I call Mr. Recorder?
I don't, so what Phil's asking is not something that we normally have ready to present. What I, what I prefer to do, Phil, is invite you to come into the central office, we'll drill that in, we'll drill down into that for you, because if it's something that's meaningful, then we can start incorporating that into our town meetings beginning next year.
Follow-up, Mr. Pless.
Yes, Pauls. We've always, you know, when, um, you know, before we got to town meeting numbers, we've always had numbers, um, for the whole district of what the school costs for the total budget.
Okay, so Sanderson Academy costs one-point-nine million and reflects the, uh, of the buildings, it's the largest increase in ratio to the district. It's an eleven-point-three percent increase. Actually, other than Col rain, uh, central office, the high school, middle school, Buckland Sheldon are all decreasing. Heat is flat at negative point one. Col rain goes up seven-point-six and Sanderson goes up eleven-point-three.
So, if I understand, the question that Mr. Pless put on the floor is what percentage of the one-point-nine-five million dollars goes to Sanderson versus Mohawk? That's your question. The answer is, I think, we don't know. But the largest percentage has been Asheville in the district. But Phil says and thinks we've had that information before. The superintendent is inviting you to come in and tell them why we should allocate it, I think.
No, we don't count, according to the regional agreement, we don't calculate, we don't separate it out from, there's one number that goes into the assessment for the towns and then we run the formula and it gives us the, the allocation for town.
Um, one more follow-up, Phil, because I understand you're frustrated, so.
Okay, so what, the one-point-nine million is the assessment, it's not what the true, um...
I'm sorry, the one-point-nine-five is the subject of the article or the one-point-nine that caused you run the issue? Which are you referring to? You said it cost one-point-nine million.
See, that confused me too, because what we're voting on is one-point-nine million total for all of Sanderson and, and the only, um, you know, I assume that's our share of Sanderson and our share of Mohawk.
Yeah. I didn't know which one-point-nine million you're referring to.
So, we're saying that Sanderson alone is one-point-nine million.
Sanderson alone is one-point-nine...
Right. It's coincidence that one-point-nine million happens to be the...
Yeah, and in the past, it's been about two-thirds Asheville, one-third Asheville. Is that still accurate? Because then we go on to backwards.
See, this is why I'm inviting you to come into the office, Phil, because what we, what we have is Asheville's percentage relative to the whole district.
Yeah.
Not relative to county. It's eighteen-point-five percent for the district.
Okay, thank you. Your patient, Mr. Recorder.
Uh, Jeffrey Recorder, Baptist Road, I'm sure of Mr. Pless, the, his disappointment remains not fully articulated right by the plugging, but I'd like to know how much is being allocated to the special needs students and how much, does it increase or decrease over previous years?
Well, first let me invite you to come to any of the open publicly posted meetings where we develop the budget. So, what I've learned over the past ten years is the level of detail that you're asking for is much better calculated in a smaller group setting. So, these numbers, when I bring them to the townsfolk who have not been embedded in, in all those details, is to give them a level of understanding to help them make an informed judgment. So, let me extend that invitation first of all. What I can share with you are the, is how the budget breaks out. Instructional is fifty percent. Benefits are twenty-one percent. Operations are nine percent. Tuition, which includes choice charter and out of district special education, is eight percent. Transportation is six percent. Student support services, which is special education related, is three percent. Administrative costs are three percent and technology is one percent.
Oh, Mr. Recorder.
I don't think you answered my question. And, uh, one way that we have meetings is so we can all come together as a community and understand each other, we all can go to your office.
Can anyone answer the question about what percentage goes to special needs education? Anybody?
We don't have the number breaking out special education in particular.
Thank you. One more follow-up.
Does that mean you don't provide it or you just don't have it with you?
All of this data is public data and it's available, but I don't have it with us.
Thank you. Further discussion. Are we ready to vote? Mr. Nelson.
Eric Nelson, Bellville Road. I rise in favor of the, of the motion. Uh, I believe that I've gone to several school committee meetings during the budget process. I found them very informative, detailed, a lot of these questions, that's the form for that. I don't disagree with my fellow citizen Jeffrey Recorder, but I believe the superintendent is right in that information comes out during the budget process. The school committee members in Asheville are available for that. I found the budget process very transparent, open. I found that they were responsive to several parents' concerns about allocation of student, uh, progress and certainly in areas of transportation where instructional changes were being proposed and those were rectified based on parent and citizen input. So, again, I rise in favor of the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Nelson. My other question, isn't this kind of information available on the website? Mr. Robinson or superintendent, somebody speak to that? Because these are fair questions.
The website is in transition right now, but normally all of this data is publicly posted, so that you can download it in a PDF format from the website.
Thank you. Phil, could you tell us what the website is?
Mohawkschools.org.
Thank you. Mohawkschools.org. Are we ready to vote?
Yes.
Yeah? Okay. All those in favor of the town raising and appropriating one-hundred-million-nine-hundred-and-forty-nine-thousand-eight-hundred-and-nineteen dollars to pay for this more education, that's to say aye?
Aye!
Both? So, much to carry. Thank you. Very much.
Just, thank you very much for supporting the education of our young children. I just want to emphasize how beautiful your kids are and what a pleasure it is to serve them. And for me, much, uh, really.
All right, um, now, here's my intention, folks. It's twelve forty. How does one o'clock sound? You, you could call out if you'd like to raise the one o'clock. All right, sounds good, thank you. Article ten, do I hear a motion?
Mr. Marry.
You call it.
I move the town adopt the following provision of Chapter one ninety-three of the Acts of two thousand and twelve and act further regulating animal control, section eleven C. No fee shall be charged for a license for a dog owned by a person aged seventy years or over in the city or town that accepts this provision.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
You're not even set to your own?
No.
Do you, uh, explain this, Mr. Pless?
I will. This, this article was brought forth by our town clerk. Uh, the town needs to formally adopt this, uh, to make it so.
Thank you. Is there a recommendation from the finance committee?
Mr. Moderator, the finance committee unanimously approves this motion.
Thank you, Mr. Riley. Discussion. Yes?
Yes, um, sitting in nine-three-nine-seven Main Street. My only question about this is are we going to continue or insist upon rabies vaccines of the dogs that are no longer going to have to have a formal license?
Well, the town clerk said yes. She said quietly, she said yes. Uh, yes, Mr. Riley.
Paula, Main Street. Uh, I'm confused at this point now because they just said not formally licensed. I thought the dog still had to be licensed, just that it's no longer a fee.
I'm trying to ask, ask... Well, the question that she asked and then I thought you said that it was no longer to be formally licensed in the conversation with rabies. I just understood, I thought they still got licensed, just like...
Correct. Yeah.
That's there, did everybody hear?
Oh.
The dog will still be licensed, it's just been a seventy-year-old or older dog owner won't have to pay a fee for that license. The dog will still get shots and comply with, the owner will be required to comply with all other rules, won't have to pay a fee for the license. Okay? Mr. Hur.
Uh, I'm not asking this question seriously because I think it's going to happen. What if all of a sudden my father-in-law, ninety years old, owns all my dogs?
What?
What happens if all of a sudden my father-in-law claims he owns all three of my dogs? How do you determine ownership?
A rabies certificate will be required of the owner of rabies, uh, the name on it. Um, we'll look to see whether the dog's face resembles yours or your father-in-law's.
I have to admit, the finance committee struggled with this for some time because we saw heaven running away from the town yet. However, those of us who are over seventy on the finance committee realize this was an ideal opportunity to buy lots of dogs.
Ms. Lilly.
Question.
There are session. Okay. That's non-doubtable, non-admissible, requires a two-thirds majority. All those in favor, bark. I'm sorry, say aye if you're ready. Was opposed?
No.
I, I have it as a majority, Carrie. Anybody disagree with that on account? Okay. Thank you very much. Article eleven.
Mr. Moderator.
This one's ordered.
Oh, you're right. All those in favor of the vague motion, which is to adopt the Act regulating animal control and exempting anyone, any dog owner aged seventy or over from paying a fee for that license, say aye.
Aye!
Opposed?
No.
Thank you. Thank you, the special referee. Now, article eleven.
Mr. Moderator. Mr. Moderator, I vote the town change the date of holding the town caucus from the seventh Tuesday prior to the annual town meeting and election as voted at the special town meeting January nineteenth, nineteen eighty-three, to hold caucus on a Tuesday, not later than the thirty-eighth day preceding town elections in compliance with Mass. General Laws, Chapter fifty-three, Section seventy-two K.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Would you like to, anybody?
Uh, this article was brought, recommended by the town clerk and it allows some more flexibility in setting the date of town caucus, which is always helpful, and it gets our, our election dates in line with the state. I thought that was your job. So, town, town caucus, if, if everyone isn't aware, uh, is when nominations occur to, to fill all the elected seats in town.
I, I just asked Mr. Carter to add that in case of any newcomers who aren't familiar with the caucus, it's a bit of a mess, that's what we're talking about here. Is there a recommendation? No, there isn't, is there?
No, there's no recommendation.
No recommendation from the finance committee because it's not a financial matter that we're talking about. So, um, discussion, respect to article eleven.
Yes, sir, Mr. Cole. David Cole, Phillips Road. Can I direct them that this is, uh, meaning that the caucus will be held just slightly more than a month before town meeting? Is that correct? And, uh, currently, because of the, um, the current time period, then nominees are able to be in the paper a full month before the town meeting. In this case, um, we wouldn't know about nominees in our Asheville newspaper quite possibly because the caucus would be, would happen, uh, after the deadline for the April edition. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
So, I'm concerned that the, the time period is too short for us to get the notice of new, uh, of nominees in the paper for the previous month.
Well, I can speak to the deadlines of the Asheville, I understand that I always send them to the Asheville, um, you, it's, you choose to print them in the April edition. I mean, I tend to sit here and just not print them.
No, no, we, sorry, just to be clear, there, the, the current caucus was in plenty of time for us to print those individuals who were running for office in the April edition, which I did.
Right.
Um, my concern is that with this shortened time period, we wouldn't be able to make the deadline.
Well, it's not really a short, a short period. It'll always be at least thirty-eight days preceding and only move by maybe one week.
Okay, I thought I read that it's going to be, it was seven weeks.
So, that's Thursday, Friday.
It's seven Tuesday prior to day today.
Right.
And it'll probably move by maybe one week to date, but at least it will be within the, at least thirty-eight days. So, will it reach that? I can't really answer that, but...
Right, I'm just concerned that it's potentially a shorter period now between the town meeting, which is always the first Saturday of May, uh, so that it might make sense for it to be a little farther forward.
Right.
Um, for those who don't know or couldn't infer, David Culp graciously undertaken, agreed on to take, um, incredible obligations in terms of making sure the Asheville News is public.
Um, for those who don't know or couldn't refer, David Culpeper graciously undertaken, agreed to undertake, uh, incredible obligations, referred to making sure the Asheville News is published in the Times anyway, and, um, you just heard it, the town league, our town clerk, so, thank you. Good question. Who else had their hand up on article eleven? Are we ready to vote? Oh, let's go.
Well, I'd like to make an amendment.
Okay.
But I need to make it in writing.
You do need to make it in writing, so we know what it is, but why don't you say it as you're walking up?
Well, I'd like to inclu, uh, increase the thirty-eight days preceding town elections to maybe forty-two.
Well, that's written in the law, you can't change that. It could happen, the way you're referring to it.
Well, hang on a second. I'm sorry, I interrupted. Um, so, there, there is going to be an amendment, which will be written in a moment, but now we understand it's going to be from thirty-eight days preceding to forty-second days preceding. Is there a second to that amendment? There is a se, a second. So, um, we'll put that motion on the floor. All right, I'm just going to add, Mr. Culpeper's being, I'm sorry. Why he's proposing an amendment, if we remove the words thirty-eight and replace it with forty-second, and then we'll hear from the town clerk.
That's right, I would like to increase the date just slightly, perhaps to the better part of the week, just to ensure that there's good, uh, amount of times we will get the nominees in the papers month preceding the annual town.
Okay, um, now, firsthand, I'm going to recognize, I'm just, thank you. You can stay here. Uh, we're gonna, right now, we're only talking about the amendment, the closed amendment, and you wanted to say something about the statute?
I do.
You got to speak into this.
If you read the date, not later than the thirty-eight preceding town election, not later, and that's in compliance with Mass. General Law, you can't change that date. Not later than, you can have it earlier.
We can, but I would like to ensure that we always do.
But you can't change the, it's, it's referenced in Mass. General Law. I'll subscribe to it, it's Mass. General Law, chapter fifty-three, section seventy-two A. You can't change the thirty-eight preceding.
All right, um, Mr. Fitzgerald.
Uh, Michael Fitzgerald, that is for a real, and, um, we have a law now, I think you'd have to remove the reference to M.J.L., wouldn't you? Can't we just have another law that isn't in compliance with M.J.L. that is forty-four days, according to the law, saying we have to wait four days longer than M.J.L.? It says greater than thirty-eight days, it's either forty-four day law, we can't comply.
So, we have to buy one. Um, hang on a minute. Mr. Murray, the citizen, make this, uh, Mr. Murray, wow. The law is so bad.
Um, I would speak in favor of the amendment as offered, because as I read this, if you say not later than the forty-second day preceding town elections, you would be in compliance with Mass. statute's law that says thirty-eight. So, anything more than thirty-eight seems to me as, uh, de facto in compliance, and this would give, I think, our editor more assurance that he's got sufficient lead time for a very important function, and that is to get candidates out and publicized. I would advocate that we support this amendment as submitted.
Okay, uh, who has their hand up? No. Call it, I see your hand up.
I'm imagining, and, this is, Mr. Carter.
Uh, Ben Mark, Phillips Road, so, what, do we need to have this motion at all? Are we, how is it, why is this state law at present, or who is to what we could do?
My understanding is that if we've been operating under, under a bylaw, it was seven weeks before, and so what we'd like to do would be to give that more flexibility, and we may, under our town office, we have a ban. And so, in order, there's a statute that says, although it's not within the thirty-eight days, and right now, we're engaging statutory interpretation as to whether or not forty-two would, um, whether it's somehow this leading, the statute only says thirty-eight days, whether we seconded somehow this leading, and Mr. Murray, and Mr. Culpeper, and Mr. Fitzgerald, say no, that wouldn't be misleading, and that's where we're at. Mr. DeHern.
I think, uh, both, uh, Mr. Murray and Mr. Culpeper are correct. Mr. Murray and Mr. Culpeper are both correct, because what we're doing is, in, in the amendment, is we're staying, we're, we're staying within the confines of the statute that said we have to have this be no less than, or no later than, a certain time. And what we're saying in the amendment is that we're giving ourselves more time, we're never going to fall out of compliance, so, I think what we're doing is actually modifying bylaw, and we have a choice right now, which puts us way before the deadline of the statute.
Yeah, if they pass that way, we're not addressing the bylaw that would require it be posted, changing the bylaw, and it would have to be by a two-thirds majority, and it's different to change, implement the bylaw. But with now ready for, Mr. Fitzgerald, Mr. Murray, Mr. DeHern's opinion, do they feel we be within compliance of the statute by asking for a larger, enlarging the amount of time, without shrinking the amount of time provided by the statute? So, I am here, I'm opposed. And you? Sitting here, so, and there's one over there.
Oh, yes, Eric DeRode, um, I seconded this amendment, because I do think that we need at least that much time, not only to, um, post the names, but after a caucus, the candidates then need to have time to prepare a statement about what they're, you know, why they're running, and what their positions are, so, um, I guess my only question is, you know, is forty-two, forty-four sufficient time for that?
Okay, so, I'm going to ask our chief elections officer, is there anything else you'd like to speak to? I want to make sure that your voice is out there.
Well, it's two things, I mean, this essentially, in my mind, we're giving ourselves more time. Personally, what we have is locking us into a particular date and time, but this gives us more flexibility within the law to actually extend that time, and give us more time, because I have deadlines leading up to after caucus, and nomination papers, and elections, and town meeting, that is shrinking that time. And so, this gives us that more flexibility to allow more of this to happen, which I think will speak to, and David, and the Asheville News, and give candidates time to prepare a statement, which we didn't, we do not have right now.
Okay, I'm going to move right to Mr. Legore.
Yeah, thank you. Um, you said something just a couple of minutes ago, that our, we asked this question, if we were referencing the bylaw. So, if the bylaw says it has to be set to Tuesday, then it would be over favor of this motion, have we altered the bylaw, or what happened?
I think we accepted the statute as required, resident, not be done by a bylaw, but rather we endorsed using the state statute, which creates a window, which has a floor of thirty-eight days, and we still have a ceiling of seven weeks, so I think we'd be, I think that's what I'd hear.
Right, so it has to be approved by the H.E. now.
So, my follow-up, will we then need to go and alter our bylaw later later?
Well, once we vote, if it's approved, and I have to approve it, it's certified, and send it to the H.E.'s office for their approval, and they will send it back their approval or not, and then we will formally amend our bylaw and add this to it. Thank you.
Have this, are we going to ask Mr. Culpeper?
I'm just saying, I can't hear any of this round of saying.
Okay, so you really have to leave the bylaw.
Okay, sorry.
No, it's not her, uh, Ms. Luca, I haven't heard nothing of what she said.
Okay, so the question, Ms. Luca's question was whether or not, um, we, we would be violating the bylaw by adopting this. The answer was, um, that the attorney general would have to approve your adoption of the statutory authority of the town to do a caucus, conduct a caucus, so long as it's not within thirty-eight days of today. And, but the H.E. would have to approve it after review of our bylaw, and I understand we have a bylaw that says it will have it seven weeks in advance, so, um, right? So, let's all keep our voice up, trying to avoid having people cover the microphone, but thank you, Mr. Promet, for pointing that out. Mr. Legore.
I could do an ad. Right now, it's forty-six days before the town meeting, not seven, sevens, it's six sevens plus four days, because it could become the Tuesday before the town meeting, it becomes a Saturday, not Tuesday. But, we already meet the minimum requirement for the thirty-seven days, they're, they're talking about, town meeting compliance now, because they mandate that we will meet forty-six days ahead under our bylaw.
Right, but the, our current bylaw limits us to the seventh Tuesday, it doesn't give you any flexibility at all. You can't have it, the eighth Tuesday.
That's true, I agree on that, and your feeling that, that's a minimal date we've got to have under state law, and then you, but this gentleman's looking for some security, it's going to be more days than that.
Okay, and Tuesday's changed, calendar changed, right? Uh, Mr. Mark, Mr. Stewart, does anybody else want to speak to that proposal? Mr. DeHern.
So, as I, as I understand the issue, the, the issue is, has nothing really to do with whether or not we fall out of compliance, because both ways are in compliance. The real issue on the amendment is whether we want to give the Asheville News an additional amount of time to be able to post, uh, candidates' names and stick up position statements, and that's basically all of the voting, who will vote on the amendment?
Okay, are we ready to vote on the closed amendment? Yes. Closed amendment would replace the word eighty-eight? That they were, uh, I mean, thirty-eight, with, uh, forty-second, correct? Correct. I made myself thirty-eight, thirty-eight, replacing forty-second. All in favor of that amendment, say aye.
Aye!
Oppose? Okay, amendment carried. Let's go back to the main motion. Um, any further discussion on whether we should adopt, um, the change, the date of the holding of the town caucus from the seventh Tuesday to not later than the forty-second day preceding town elections? Discussion. Ready to vote? All in favor of article eleven, replacing thirty-eight with forty-second, say aye?
Aye!
Oppose? Inception. Unanimous. Ready to go for number?
Yeah.
Okay. Article twelve, is there a motion? Mr. Clark.
Brian Clark, Clark Road in Apple Valley. Mr. Moderator, I move that town raise and appropriate six hundred dollars to help pay for the newly established part-time position of energy manager, contingent upon receiving the energy manager grant from the Department of Energy Resources.
Second. May and second, if you'd like to explain, Rupert, I want to see.
Okay, uh, late last year, the Department of Energy Resources, during, uh, made available grants for funding, uh, energy managers in the municipalities, um, with the support of Select Board and Finance Committee, the Green Communities Committee, which I'm representing, uh, apply for a, uh, one day a week, enough money to support an energy manager for a one-day-a-week position. The grant is potentially a two-year grant, uh, the second year funding is contingent on meeting criteria of thirty-first year. The first year of grant funds ninety percent of the expense of the position, the second year, it funds about two-thirds of the expense of the position. So, the, uh, six hundred dollars that this motion is asking for is the town's share of, of that, uh, of the cash part of the, of the grant. We are also doing some in-kind, uh, funding to reach the ten percent requirement.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. Is there a recommendation by the finance committee?
Yes, Mr. Moderator, the finance committee recommends a big register.
Uh, I forgot, I should add, the, uh, uh, grants were announced on Thursday, and Asheville did receive, uh, a grant.
For how much?
Eight thousand, four hundred and fifty-five dollars.
Yeah. Yes.
Alan Rice, South Street, so the finance committee, just to be clear, it's not unanimous?
What?
They are unanimous. Five to nothing, recommendation by the finance committee. Further discussion? Yes, Mr. Williams, then Mr. Precord.
Uh, Tom Loy, Cape Street, uh, having been a former energy manager myself for many years, I'm just interested, who will be supervising this individual, and do you have, uh, any, any current plans for the scope of work?
Part of the, uh, part of the grant application included a...
Can you move a little closer?
Part of the grant application included a list of, of objectives for the, for the first year for the energy manager, it's rather detailed, because of the state grant requirements, I'll have to review that with you, I don't want to take the time to read it, you know? Our intention at this point is that the, the energy manager would be primarily overseen by the Green Communities Committee, it's going to be to myself, very quickly, and Jennifer Williams.
Mr. Precord.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you, the, the oversight committee is, is, is who led?
Green Communities Committee, we, we're, uh, our committee of three were formed several years ago to apply for Green Communities designation for Asheville, which we achieved in, uh, at the end of twenty-eleven, I think, and received a grant of a hundred and forty-one thousand dollars, or some change, for doing energy conservation, uh, green kind of activities for the town, but we're still in the process of expanding.
Okay, so, is there fellow on question, uh, any considerations to the possibility of pipeline or included in the regulations, as to what would be involved?
Um, off the top of my head, I don't think it's relevant.
That's not what I asked.
I'm afraid to say, I think that's responsible. Ian, Mr. Carter, would you like to speak to?
The, the purpose of the energy manager is to oversee energy conservation work and potentially renewable energy projects in town.
Okay, all right, well, that, that is, okay.
Yeah, the, these folks are the ones who've been crawling under town hall for...
And that is, I agree with probably that.
So, in every public building in town, these folks have, uh, amended, made predictions about how they're more energy efficient, and long-term plans for replacing heating units with, um, more energy efficient ones, and, um, literally crawling their bodies under town hall to, uh, facilities, so, it's that kind of energy stuff, as opposed to infrastructure.
Yeah, I can go back to Tom's question, that's the, uh, tasks of the, Al Boniforti, are primarily oriented around the work of the Green Communities Committee, is doing work really overloaded with what we've been trying to do, and we saw this in the way of getting some help for that.
So, any further discussion, Dr. Rock, and then you can't see who it is.
I was just going to say that having moved the acceptance, acceptance of the reports, I want to call attention to page thirty-two, where your report, and what you've been doing is listed.
Thank you. Thank you.
During the next recession, the grant will not be renewed by the state.
I'm sorry, the town, who you are, where you live.
Rick interest, Watson. Will the town be obliged to pick up the full cost of this salary when the grants don't get renewed?
Uh, this position is really a, a year-by-year, then there's no, there's no commitment to continuing to fund this for future years, that's something that the Select Board and Finance Committee will make a decision on along with us on a year-by-year basis. The funding, as I said, uh, for the second year is also contingent from the state's side, on meeting their set of objectives for what we, what the energy manager needs to achieve in the first year, but it's, it's not, there's not a firm commitment to continue, I'm sorry, to continue the, the position year-by-year. That would, beyond the second year, would have to be fully funded by the town, if we continue to beyond, into the third year and beyond.
Um, who hasn't spoken to this yet? Rather, end up, Ms. Cole.
Nina Cole, Bay Road, uh, I've come, driven by on a weekend, recently. Uh, I've come driven by on a weekend recently and seen these guys' vehicles here while they're underneath working. And given the hundreds of man-hours they've donated as volunteers, I think six hundred dollars is chump change to give them a hand up.
I agree.
Not sure Mary would agree with the man-hour point, but, um, her, oh, sorry.
Just a question. So, Ashfield's been awarded eight thousand milligrams for this position. Is that correct? And so, does the grant require that we put up the six hundred?
Yes.
Okay.
It's got the engine on this, passing the cycle among other things.
Okay, so, is the eighty-six hundred total a salary or is it for other things too?
The budget includes, uh, some miscellaneous things, office supplies, some equipment, uh, using which we're actually donating as part of the in-time matching. Uh, some transportation expenses. It's primarily salary, uh, miscellaneous.
Also, the six hundred dollars is office supplies and miscellaneous expenses, and you have to eat this microphone.
I guess my question is, how much of the eighty-six hundred is locked or designated for salary only?
We, we did a, an overall budget, it's broken down by salary and, uh, the other pieces, like supplies and travel and equipment and that. The, the, my memory of the way the grant is awarded is there is not any, any piece of it that's dedicated to any one of those things.
Okay, so, of those grant monies, I guess whoever does the, the Select Board does the appointing, the salary would be, uh, recommended?
No, I, I, okay, I misunderstood the question. The salary, as a grant application reads, the salary was, uh, twenty dollars an hour and eight, eight hours a week.
Thank you. Um, considering minus the time, Mr. Mary.
Uh, I hope this is responsive to the last couple of questions, but first of all, uh, the spreadsheet that I have for the submission, uh, shows that the bulk of the amount, eighty-four fifty-five, would be, um, allocated to the manager's wages, to the energy manager's wages. It's about eighty-three hundred dollars, I believe. The other question had to do with whether this would, uh, have to be self-funded by the town, and it's true that after two years' time, with this funding, uh, being tapered off, the town would have to pick up the full cost of a part-time energy manager if we were to continue the program. The continuation of the program is calculated in part on some expectation that a, an energy manager might be able to generate the kinds of funds which would, and then in turn, support that individual's salary. If that's not the case, then the town would have to pick it up, uh, in its entirety, even though it's a part-time salary, you could argue it's modest. But that's one of the issues with all these funding grants. You've got to be careful about how many years you're going to get funded and for how much. They typically want to get you started and expect that the town will then kind of get enamored of the idea, and you can continue to make the sort of energy savings that you kind of paid for the salary and so forth. But after two years, this, uh, this would have to be fully funded by the town. Is he a town employee? I'm sorry, if you have a question? Mr. Interst. Rick Interst, Watson. Does this person become a town employee? Mr. Carter.
Sure. It's going to be a town employee position. It's, uh, you know, I, it's a, um, it's huge what this small group, very focused on energy, has been able to do without a lot of distractions as far as the amount of money they've been able to bring to the town and the amount of work they've been able to do. But what they're finding out, and the way it was presented to us at the budget meetings, was that it's too much. It's too much for a small group, and they would welcome a larger group that would be constructive and helping. But if they need some help, they need some administration and being able to, to direct somebody to take care of so many needs in the town. So, it's a great experiment, and it's no cost, really relatively small cost to us to have a person that that committee can use as a point person to, uh, not distract them so much from their personal lives, but still be able to bring great value to the town as far as energy conservation.
Thank you, Mr. Carter. And Mr. Pivison, Mr. Billy.
Oh, yeah, Pivison, River Grove. I want to remind people that a lot of what the Green Communities has been about is reducing costs to the town primarily of energy use. So, it would be my expectation that in addition to the figures that are in their report from this past year, that, um, somebody in this kind of a position would really be instrumental in tracking and, and projecting reductions in costs to the town as well as being environmentally more, um, appropriate for these towns.
Thank you. Sandy Lilly, Cape Street.
Brian, my thanks to you and, um, your committee and all of the effort you put into this and I hope the pastor. Second.
Okay. Question is called, that's been seconded, debatable, nonamendable, will require a two-thirds majority, and hopefully afterwards I'll remember where we were at before we went. So, all those in favor of cutting off debate by calling the question, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? I think that's two-thirds. Now we go back to the main motion. All those in favor of six hundred dollars to help pay for the newly established part-time position of energy manager, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed?
No.
Okay. Motion carries. Thank you. Article thirteen.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Coler.
I move the town to petition in Massachusetts General Court to enact special legislation allowing Doug Field, a call firefighter, to continue in his position until the date of his retirement or until his non-reappointment, whichever occurs, whichever first occurs, and to ask that this special legislation take effect upon its passage.
Again, okay, we have a second, an explanation.
Yeah, this is new for the town. This is, uh, special legislation, um, that happens frequently, uh, with a lot of different issues. None of our, our firefighters are all volunteers. None of them draw a retirement or pension plan from the municipality. And so, what this is looking for basically is to allow these people, or very clearly to allow Doug Field to continue working in a support role through our firefighters as a volunteer. And, uh, we're trying it out for the first time, the special legislation, and if successful, we might pursue it on other persons who are over the age of sixty-five, the mandatory time of age.
I think it was different, we're not asking for any kind of that, right?
No.
Specifically not that, just mainly just like the age requirement, in kind of exempt it from the South Side. Everybody understand that?
No.
Okay. There's a statute that requires, do you want to replay it, you said me? No. There's a statute that, that suggests that such a person would be entitled to, to, um, benefits, uh, prior retirement or pension. This motion, if you vote on this, is simply saying that Doug's not going to get it, right? And then we have to be asking for special legislation to exempt him and all of our firefighters, because they're all volunteers, and chief gets the cycle, uh, which we increased last year, but none of them are employees and are credited by a pension. So, we need a special enactment by the legislate, legislature to say, but not these guys who come to volunteer. Is that right, Mr. Carter?
Just, what we're really after here is, is state law, you know, these, these things that have passed so far away, probably generated quite a bit by unions, if we think about fire districts and the fire companies and so forth across the state, that there's a mandatory age that you cannot participate, you're not supposed to be a fireman after the age of sixty-five. This is excluding Doug from that. This is saying that we know we have volunteer firefighters that are over the age of sixty-five. We appreciate their service and, and we want them to continue to serve as long as they are willing and certainly able. So, that, that is the meat and the crux of this, is to, to try to bring ourselves in line with so many regulations and laws that we're overriding this to, to say that just because someone's sixty-five doesn't mean that they're not a father.
Thank you. Mr. Proman and Mr. Elwell.
Phil Burrows, Burn and Drive, uh, Fire Department, uh, during the day at least, is short of volunteers and people to respond. And the department is certainly short of people with, uh, expertise in the operation and handling of fires. Certainly Doug has expertise, and, uh, I would not expect him to do the heavy lifting on a scene. I don't think he'll be running to burn buildings. But having more people around who know what they're doing, who are older, more mature, and helping teach younger firefighters would be a great advantage. And just arbitrarily saying seventy is, is, the age doesn't, doesn't mean anything, uh, out here. We need the people no matter what age, if they are capable of carrying out their duties.
Mr. Elwell.
Unless you're too old to remember your question.
Not yet. Uh, Will Elwell, back to you, Row. I did not hear the article from, um, Ron Coler as read, uh, as written in the, in the, uh, handout. It's seen, it's seen more, so.
So, what happened is, um, the posted warrant, as long as something is within the scope of what you read when it was posted, sometimes things get amended and the articles get changed, which is what happened here. So, it is different, I should have pointed that out in my bed. It is different than what you read in the posted warrant, but it is a motion to petition, and that's a special legislation, a general court, to enact a special legislation, uh, allowing him to have his work. And old guys, by the way, today Doug and Diane are celebrating their fiftieth wedding
Does that answer your question, Mr. Elwell?
That question, yes. But I also wondered if we should amend this article to be more inclusive of anybody that's getting older, and why were you focusing just exclusively on this?
Mr. Carter.
It, it has to do again with the statute and the regulations, and it says that you have to handle these one at a time by name. So, this is kind of our first trip into that to get that done. But certainly that, that's the goal.
I do understand that our representative, Cleveland, is aware of this issue, is aware that most of our fire departments are staffed by volunteers, is aware that they are aging, and, um, that would take a special enactment by the legislature to change the statute that right now requires mandatory certification, so. Anything else on Article thirteen? Okay. All those in favor of the town petitioning in Massachusetts General Court to enact special legislation allowing Doug Field to continue in his position until the date of his retirement, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed?
No.
That carries. Article fourteen. And I think this will be before we break to lunch.
It's one, one.
I'm sorry?
One.
I know. Let's do Article fourteen and then we'll break. Um, Mrs. Sayer?
No.
I'm sorry. Will you be around for Article fifteen after lunch?
Yes.
Thank you. Um, so, there are motion on Article fourteen, after which we'll break to lunch.
Mr. Moderator.
Yes.
Mr. Moderator, I move the town authorize the Select Board to discharge the lien on the Ashfield House LLC for a cash settlement.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Would you like to speak to this?
This, uh, issue came up during the year, and it has come up in prior years. Certainly, we're all aware in town of, of what the Ashfield House apartments, the LLC, uh, is in the middle of town. And this lien, quite often we get, thinking of liens, we think of loans. And this lien is not, uh, the product of a loan that the town of Ashfield made in refurbishing the Ashfield House. This, this was made in nineteen eighty-nine, okay? And it was a federal, what they called a core focus grant. I think it was federal money passed through the state, and then it came to the Ashfield House when it was making that transition from a rest home to the apartment building that it is now. Now, part of the terms on that grant was that the proceeds of that, as the business got up and got running, would be paid back to the town, that that money would be paid back over time to the town to be used for community and town projects, sidewalks, parks, that sort of thing. All right? Shortly after the grant was administered and the ribbon was cut and the apartment building was going, the owner at that time came to the Select Board, which I was on the board at that time, and said that it was not possible at that time to make the scheduled payments. The Select Board allowed that to last, said, "Don't worry about the scheduled payments." So, here we are twenty-five years later, and no more payments have been made. In the meantime, the, uh, building has changed hands. It's now Ashfield House LLC. And at the time of the closing, this lien business came up, and the Select Board at that time, which I was not a member of, instead of collecting the lien at that time, and I'm not, I'm not questioning the reasoning for that by any stretch of the imagination, but to make the deal happen, the Select Board took that lien and moved that to the new owners in a subordinate position. Now, any of us that own homes, and certainly any of us who all own old homes, know that there is no limit to the amount of work that can be done to them for upkeep and maintenance and sometimes improvements. So, this last year, when, uh, the Ashfield House, the owners of the Ashfield House needed financing to make improvements, painting, heating system, et cetera, et cetera, to the building, they needed to access more funds in the form of loans. So, again, for others to participate and give them the needed funding, it came to the town to once again subordinate our position. The Select Board did do that. We did move to subordinate our position again. The current balance on this lien or unpaid balance of that grant is two-hundred-and-eighty-seven thousand, five-hundred-and-twenty-one dollars. We have a building that the agreed-upon valuation is somewhere less than five-hundred-thousand dollars. And we're last in line on two-point-four million dollars roughly of debt. So, to think that this lien is any more than a bookkeeping number that sits out there is probably not looking at it clearly. And this issue, if you go back to my, if you have an old building, there's always one more thing that needs to be done, and there'll be more financing needed. Instead of this issue coming up every so often, maybe every two years, every three years, and becoming an issue that needs to be discussed again and again and revisited, by eliminating the lien, the owner of the Ashfield House will, it would be much easier if someone is willing to, uh, supply money, not having to come to the town to have a subordinate or lien that really has no value at all. So, that, that's the background.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Uh, the Finance Committee have a rendition.
Now, Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends for this, uh, article, uh, by a vote of four, uh, in, in the affirmative and one against.
Thank you, Mr. Mary. Discussion. Mr. DeHerr. Stand over here. No. Mr. DeHerr.
Mr. DeHerr, fellow, I, I realize opposition to this motion could follow the reasons. That lien, as it sits on that property, is costing the...
That lien, as it sits on that property, is costing the town nothing. It is an asset of $240,000. Is that principal and interest or just principal?
I believe it's just principal because there hasn't been any interest on it.
Okay, does the lien say there won't be any interest gain or does it prove interest to any?
The amendment to the note at the time this was executed, I think in 2004, says it's a zero interest limit, so there's no interest.
So basically, we're saying it's an asset of $200,000 the town holds, costing the town nothing to maintain that asset. And the way I see it in the motion, this is a private entity that owns title to a property, not a public entity. So you're basically proposing to say, oh, private entity, private owner, you don't have to pay us this amount of oil when you bought the property and you knew that this has been transferred with the title. The question I have is what bank in their right mind loans more money? If the valuation that you give that property is correct, how in the world would a bank loan more money against it when it's underwater already? It doesn't make sense. And finally, what does it cost us to just leave it there or even to amend it and say, this lien does become payable until the property is transferred?
Mr. Proven.
I was on the select board when we subordinated this loan at the time of the last sale of the building. I don't think it's remaining to the question of whether a bank will lend money or not, it's left to the bank. However, given that the Ashfield House, as many people see it, is an asset to the town, and given the fact that it may be easier for the owners of the Ashfield House to get financing, to keep it running, to keep it well maintained, and the fact that, so if we forgive the loan, it becomes easier and it becomes more an asset to the town. At the time that we subordinated the money, there was never a question in anybody's mind that we would ever see a payback from it. That was not the issue. The issue was politically, was it too soon for us to waive that lien, to take it off? We felt it was, and now I think it's certainly time to take it off. It is only an obstacle to the people who are owning and running the Ashfield House, and there's no benefit to the town for leaving it there.
Thank you. Mr. Carter, Mr. Wright.
I think Mr. DeHerr is a little fast and loose using the word asset, because we've got $290,000, a little less than that lien, on a property valued at $500,000 and worth a tail end of $2.4 million, thinking that that asset has any value and any probability of payback. I think there's more probability of Ruth Kraft taking the gold-headed cane and flying off to set up a settlement on the moon. Right? There is not any less value than accept, that it will be a constant source of discussion and consternation trying to figure out if it's in the best interest. It isn't. It has no value. An asset has real value. And I believe that a majority of people in this room would agree with the select board and the Finance Committee, that this lien on that particular piece of property has no value. Now, in a follow-up or in addition, I want to say that that $300,000 grant that came to the town of Ashfield has been of great value. That $300,000 was necessary to transition that building from a rest home to what it is today. That was the first huge step. That building has supplied housing to hundreds of people in the town of Ashfield. Some of them have been very good citizens in town, have actually worked in town, and certainly like the most of us, have lived in town to work somewhere else. It has supplied a tremendous value. If we hadn't got that $300,000, I ask many of you to envision, if that was not the step in stone for the building that we have now, envision what the center of Ashfield and the Ashfield House would look like today. In the 25 years since this has happened, that building has been renovated and the tax revenue that the town of Ashfield has been able to harvest from that building, I'm sure we could come up with a number, but it's huge, far beyond the $300,000 that we're talking about today. So there is advantage, and there is, and there will continue to be, of value for the Ashfield House in Ashfield, but saying that it's associated with this $287,000 lien, it doesn't exist in my reality.
Thank you, Mr. Mary.
I rise to underscore some of what Mr. Carter has said. Some time ago, when I was asked, as chairman of the Finance Committee, to assess the circumstances of the Ashfield House, I started by checking the scale and the associates to determine whether this would be considered an asset, and they said definitely not. That's why it's not listed in our audit statement as any type of asset to the town. Furthermore, as to the potential value of this lien, you can look at it a variety of ways, and this is one of the things that we did in the course of our discussions in the Finance Committee. Normally you'd look at a future payment, let's say $287,000, in terms of present value of money. And those of you who've done discounted cash flows and so on will recognize that you go to a table of discount factors, and depending on what interest rate you're using, you could value something that you might get 10 years, 20 years, 30 years out. The circumstances of this loan are such that we will not get repaid anything on this loan until such time as either it transfers ownership, which is unlikely under the circumstances of it being operated now by the housing authority, or the housing authority is able to demonstrate that this guy profitability could be upset that you have a $90,000 reserve built up and $5,000 a year in continued consistent earnings that contribute to that reserve. Any excess cash flow thereafter could be then applied for the paydown of this $287,000. The Finance Committee has undertaken a tracking of the profitability of this Ashfield House project for the last seven years and found that it's been losing money at effectively an increasing rate for the last seven years. Despite all their efforts to upgrade it and so forth, this is a losing proposition from a business standpoint. You can see a negative cash flow, and whatever reserve they had is not $90,000. It's now down to about $30,000 now. And this is even with some of the fees by the Franklin Housing and Rehabilitation, Redevelopment Authority being forgone. So this is a situation that is consistently losing money. And on that basis, it very much concords with this notion that you've got an asset here that is worth relatively little, less than $500,000, overhung by $2.4 million in debt, just like a residential homeowner, would be considered underwater. This is deeply underwater. And in fact, you can look at this, and probably the most precise way to look at this is in terms of what economic decision makers call expected value. As Mr. Carter suggested, the probability is an important factor here, the probability of getting paid back something on this particular lien arrangement. And even if you take $287,000 and try to estimate what the probability of getting paid is, the probability in our judgment approaches zero. So zero times $287,000 is zero. You could argue that there's some impossible probability of some kind of remuneration at some point in the future. But if this were ever to be turned around and make profits, it's like 20, 30, maybe 40 years out. And if you take a fraction of 1% times the $287,000, you're talking about a very scant amount of money in so far into the future that again, it's worth very close to zero. Nevertheless, we feel that some kind of compensation, if there could ever be a cash surrender, would be proven, and so therefore we back this article. We think this makes sense the way it's been thought.
Anybody who has spoken before I called somebody who had a question?
Yes. Given that you're talking about...
And here.
I'm sorry. Is that better? Given that we're looking at forgiving this lien for private owner now, I would like to know why, when it was presented to boards by the prior owner, who wasn't a private owner, the boards did not choose to forgive the loan at that time, when it would have made a significant difference not only to that owner, but to the town of Ashfield. Why is this one so much more important to forgive and forgive?
Okay. Somebody's like to hear that. Mr. Proven.
Having been on the board at the time that this discussion came up, it was the feeling of the board at the time that from the view of the town, it was too soon after the lien had been placed for the town to waive it, that what we did instead is to subordinate it to all of the other potential lenders, the banks at the time.
I'm sorry, Mr. Proven. In case anyone doesn't know, what does subordinate mean?
It means that we are the last on the list to get paid. We're at the bottom. And we understood at the time that the likelihood of us ever getting any money was virtually nil, but we did feel that from a political standpoint, and to, there was some sentiment in town that we should not give this up at the time, that we chose to leave the lien in place but subordinate it to all others. A significant amount of time has passed since then, and it makes less sense now to leave the lien in place than it did then.
Thank you, Mr. Proven. Hold on, I'm sorry. Mr. Karamides. Folks, I just want to remind everybody, at 1:20 we are on 14 of 36. But that's just me reminding you, if we have a coffee for either lunch or anything, drink a lot of coffee if you'd like what to do. Harry Karamides, Pedro Robles, call the question, please.
Second.
The second is, question has been called. This is non-debatable, non-amendable, requires a two-thirds majority. All those in favor of cutting off debate, calling the question, say aye.
Aye.
Are you opposed?
No.
I find that's two-thirds. Does anyone want to count? Say yes. Good. No, I'm sorry. She didn't say yes. Is that right? That's it. Okay. All right. Well, the question has been called and we go to the main motion. So all those in favor of authorizing the select board to discharge the lien on the Ashfield House LLC for a cash settlement, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
I find that motion carries. Do we want to break for lunch now?
Yes.
Hang on. What time do we want to come back? It's late, 2:15. We want to be finished by 5:00. 2:00. 2:00, okay? 2:00. 2:00. 2:00.